Staff is ready. Staff is ready. First to call the meeting started, let's do it. All right. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the City Council Meeting. This is the Alameda City Council, and today is February 4, 2025. And I am going to call this meeting to order. We're going to start with a special closed session, but before we do that, I would like to ask the Clerk Laura Weisenger to please call the roll.
Councilmembers Bowler.
Here.
DeSug.
Here.
Pryor.
Here.
Mayor Ezzy Ashcraft.
Here.
For present, and hopefully Councilmember Jensen will be here shortly.
And that was Vice Mayor Pryor, right? And Madam Clerk, do we have any public comment on closed-session items only?
We have none.
All right. Well, with that, we are about to adjourn into closed session to consider two items, and I would like to ask the City Clerk to please introduce those items.
Three A is conference with legal counsel existing litigation pursuant to government code section 54956.9A. Case name is City of Alameda versus Greenway Golf Associates, Inc. Court is Alameda County Superior Court. Case number is 22CV011964. Three B is conference with legal counsel, potential litigation, potential initiation of litigation pursuant to government code section 54956.9 subsection D4. Number of cases is one, with the city initiating litigation as plaintiff, potential defendant is the Port of Oakland.
Thank you very much. So, the council will now adjourn into closed session. We're going to take item three A first, the Greenway Golf item, so whoever is involved in that, please come on back to the room behind the chambers. And for the public who may be watching, we will be back before you at 7:00 PM. Everyone, and apologies for starting a little late, but welcome. This is Tuesday, February 4, 2025, and this is the City of Alameda City Council Meeting. Council has just returned from closed session, and I'd like to ask our City Clerk Laura Weisenger to please announce any action taken in closed session.
Regarding three A, which was conference with legal counsel on existing litigation for Greenway litigation, staff provided information and council provided direction with no vote taken. And regarding three B, which was conference with legal counsel with potential litigation with the city as plaintiff against the Port of Oakland, a staff provided information with no vote taken.
Thank you. And with that, I will adjourn the closed session, and I will call to order the regular City Council meeting. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance, and Councilmember DeSug, would you please lead us in the pledge?
Please rise as you are able. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every due justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember DeSug. And Madam Clerk, do we have any agenda changes?
And we have roll call, too. Five, five.
I'm so sorry. I'm speeding because we started a little late. Would you call the roll, please?
Sure. Councilmembers Bowler.
Here.
DeSug.
Here.
Jensen.
Here.
Pryor.
Here.
Mayor Ezzy Ashcraft.
Here.
Five present.
All right. And no agenda changes still?
No agenda changes, yes.
All right. Thank you. We do have a proclamation this evening. Before I read it, I just want to go over the rules of the road for when we're conducting a City Council meeting. I'd just like to remind people that this is a business meeting. The City of Alameda, we're doing the people's business up here. It's not theater, it's not a sporting event. Therefore, we don't boo, cheer, hiss, do the wave, applaud. We just sit and we listen respectfully to every speaker. We don't have to agree with them. That is your First Amendment right in action. Bless you. And this Caesar, all of you. And I'd like to remind people of this because public speaking can be one of the most stressful things people can do. I have background as a courtroom lawyer, so I got over that stage fright a long time ago. But for a lot of people, just standing up before the public, strangers, is very stressful. So, we want to make this a safe space where you can speak your mind within the jurisdiction of this body and be respectful, be respected, and respect in turn. I like to remind speakers that young people can be watching, maybe not here in the room today, but they could be watching on, you know, on TV. I was just interviewed by an Antonell High School student this week, and trust me, they are watching what we're doing. So, let's set that good example for them. And if you've got a sign, that's also your First Amendment right. Just don't hold it up over your head unless you're in the very back row, so you don't block anyone else's view of the dais. So, with that, I am honored to read the proclamation this evening declaring February, the month of February, Black History Month. And we are doing something different. We are moving into the 21st century with our proclamations. No more whereases, no more fancy language. I had this aha moment and said, "That is not how people talk. Let's just speak plain English." So, see what you think. All right. "February is Black History Month, first proposed as Black History Week by scholar Dr. Carter G. Woodson in 1926 to chronicle the rich history and contributions of Black Americans. The 2025 theme of Black History Month, African-Americans and Labor, highlights the transformative contributions of Black Americans in the workforce. The theme celebrates resilience, innovation, and contributions that have inspired progress and deeply impacted our country in every industry from agriculture to aerospace. Understanding the impact of Black labor in America is paramount to understanding the life and history of Black people in America. The exploitation and enslavement of Africans brought to the Americas by European countries and later the United States government deeply permeates many aspects of Black history and labor. Despite this exploitation and injustice, the African-American labor force contributed significantly to our nation's infrastructure and industrialization. We recognize the impact of African-Americans in the workforce as revolutionaries and trailblazers. From the prosperity of Black Wall Street to inventions like the mailbox, traffic light, golf tee, and thermostat, African-Americans in the labor force have had a profound impact on the economy of this nation. 2025 also marks the 100-year anniversary of the creation by labor organizer and civil rights activist A. Philip Randolph of the Brotherhood of Sleeping Car Porters and Maids, the first Black Union to receive a charter in the American Federation of Labor. As Governor Gavin Newsom noted in his 2025 proclamation honoring Black History Month, "From labor leaders to essential workers to CEOs, Black Californians have helped make this state the fifth-largest economy in the world and a leader in the workers' rights movement. In Alameda, several African-Americans are honored through the naming of prominent spaces including Ruby Bridges Elementary School, Little John Park and Little John Commons, the Don Grant Track and Field, Stargill Commons, and the Albert de Witt Officers Club. Now therefore, I Maryland Ezzy Ashcraft Mayor of the City of Alameda hereby proclaim February 2025 as Black History Month in the City of Alameda and encourage the community to reflect on the centuries-long struggles and successes of Black Americans whose transformative contributions in the workplace have shaped our shared history and paved the way for a future defined by unity and progress. Alameda residents can learn more about the rich history and contributions of Black Americans by attending events hosted by the Alameda Free Library, both the Main Library and the Bay Farm Island Library, including Friday, February 7, at 3:30 PM at the Main Library. Learn about artist, activist, and writer Faith Ringold as you create a paper story quilt inspired by Ringold's picture book Tar Beach. Monday, February 10, at 7:00 PM at the Bay Farm Library, there will be a family storytime highlighting the work of Ashley Bryan. Thursday, February 13, at 3:30 at the Main Library, learn about African-American astrophysicist Neil deGrasse Tyson as you create your own do-it-yourself planetarium. Saturday, February 15, 2:00 PM at the Main Library, With One Voice is an afternoon of song with the Grammy-winning Oakland Interfaith Gospel Choir. And Tuesday, February 25, 6:00 PM at the Main Library, a screening and discussion of the documentary film Strange Fruit, the biography of a song exploring the history and legacy of jazz singer Billie Holiday's classic song. And don't worry if you weren't taking notes about all those dates, because there's even more events, and they're all on the library's website. Some of the events you need to register for, so go to the library's website, which is alamedafree.org, and you'll find it all there. Thank you, everyone. And I also want to note that I'm wearing red tonight because this is Lunar New Year, and I wish everyone a happy Year of the Snake.
And Madam Mayor, we do have a public speaker on the proclamation.
Yes, all right. Our public speaker, please.
Gabriel Duncan.
Hey. My name's Gabriel Duncan. I just wanted to note that there are no African-American people on City Council right now, and that there was no member of the public community to read or accept this proclamation. There was no mention of the longstanding struggle that African-American people have had with the City of Alameda and its residents to secure housing, to get fair jobs, to be free of harassment while they live here in the City of Alameda. And I think that this isn't fair. This is not proper representation. That's all.
Thank you. Our next speaker?
That was the only one.
Oh, okay. So, we will close public comment on the proclamation, and we will move to my paper agenda. We will move to oral communications non-agenda items, and this is where speakers may address the council in regard to any matter not on the agenda over which the council has jurisdiction. We'll take 15 minutes at the top of the agenda now, and these are all in-person comments. And if we don't have time for everyone who wants to speak now, there is another opportunity at the end of the regular agenda. Madam Clerk.
Okay. We have just enough speakers to get through all of them, giving them two minutes each. The first speaker is Shalom Braun.
Welcome, Speaker. Shalom, is it Brun or Braun?
Brun.
Brun, that's what I thought. Come on in. And I always tell people, make that microphone your own, bring it to whatever level you need.
Is this okay?
It's perfect.
Thank you. Thank you for having me here. I appreciate it. Yesterday, in front of City Hall, residents, civic organizations, faith groups, and immigration rights groups gathered, spoke, and signed the letter which was presented to you earlier today for the reaffirmation of Alameda as a sanctuary city for 2025 and beyond. We stand by you to urgently reaffirm our status as a sanctuary city in 2025. State what you will do when the safety of any of our residents, businesses, community members, or visitors, regardless of ethnic or national origin, gender, gender identity and expression, race, religious affiliation, sexual orientation, or immigration status is endangered. Specifically affirm that you will prohibit federal immigration enforcement from being able to access city facilities or use city resources in the pursuit of immigration enforcement. Refuse sharing data between immigration authorities and city officials and agencies. Prohibit city employees from working with federal law enforcement on immigration matters. Prohibit local police from making arrests for federal immigration violations or to detain individuals on civil immigration warrants. Forbid any city entity to enter into contract with the federal government to detain immigrants. Forbid police or other city workers to ask about immigration status and refuse to allow ICE into local jails without judicial warrant. We, as a city and community, are organized and prepared to take care of our residents, businesses, community members, and visitors, and keep them safe. We expect our city government officials and city departments to stand with us as we will stand with you should our city be challenged. Please accept these signatures, which I have with me, of Alameda community members that I have asked in order to reaffirm Alameda's sanctuary city status and remain vigilant for necessary changes as we face this new federal administration.
Thank you, and your time is up. Thank you so much. Our next speaker?
Gerald Bryant.
Welcome, Speaker Bryant. And I will add that Speaker Bryant is also a member of the Social Services Human Relations Board.
Thank you. I'm gonna start this off real quick. So, today, I am not here as representative of the Social Services or Human Relations Board. I'm not here as a member of any other organizations, as a business owner, but as a citizen of Alameda, representing my own beliefs. Over the past few months, I've noticed a general lowering of civility between people here in Alameda. I'm not talking about city staff, or the police, or the fire, or emergency workers, the actual citizens of Alameda. There's a difference between politeness and civility. Civility is about genuine engagement and fairness and striving for justice and understanding and interactions, and politeness is characterized by tact and conformity and discretion and borderliness. In recent weeks, though, I've seen that both civility and politeness has gone down. When I walk down the streets here in Alameda, I notice a general social anxiety and fear when meeting or even just walking past people. On more than one occasion, I've had people walk out into the middle of the street rather than walk past me going down the block. I've had people clutch their purses and step away. I've had people walk up and take photographs of me and say disparaging things such as, "Welcome to America," and "Thank you for being part of the criminal conspiracy." As an Alamitan, this is not the first time I've seen people act ignorantly towards me, nor do I expect it to be the last. But there does seem to be a marked increase in the amount of incivility that I see when I walk down the streets. When the media and the news have been heavily biased with these days, people face information overload, and it's easy to become passive and disengaged. I understand that there are people in this city.
Yeah, thank you. Your time is up. Thank you.
I will come back for more.
Take care. Our next speaker?
Estella Villagrana.
Hello again. My name is Estella Villagrana, the owner of Building 43 Winery, and I'm here before you guys just to, for you to see me again and to see the face of Building 43 Winery. I'm proud to say that I'm a U.S. citizen, I'm Mexican citizen, proud to have dual citizenship. And I'm retired. I retired after more than 30 years working for a government agency. The reason why I mention that is because in those 30-plus years working for a government agency, I never felt harassed, discriminated, looking down from anybody like I feel being a business owner in Alameda. And I've been harassed, my business has been harassed, and I will probably run out of time by trying to tell you the different ways the city or staff is being harassing my business. Just to say a little, I'm wondering if any other business in Alameda had received a paid or quit on the 7th of the month, being late for two days to pay my lease of the business. Just wondering if Alameda will support small Latina-owned business just as well as big corporates owned by white male people.
Thank you. Our next speaker?
Jennifer Rakowski.
Welcome, Speaker Rakowski.
Hi. I'll be quick. I wasn't able to join the protest yesterday reaffirming us as a sanctuary city in a sanctuary state, but I have heard repeated public officials, school officials, and staff at different city departments affirm our status as sanctuary city, spread information about know your rights, and I want to express appreciation of the groundwork that the city has done to protect its residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker?
Brian Kennedy.
Welcome, Speaker Kennedy.
Good evening. It's over. The four-year Biden-Harris nightmare is over. Now, we've got a new president in town, thank God. Some are calling it a new golden age. What's appropriate about President Trump's inauguration is that it happened on Martin Luther King Day, and one of the first acts of President Trump was to eliminate DEI, which goes against everything that Martin Luther King stood for. Content of your character over the color of your skin. DEI wastes billions of dollars, and Trump, in one of his first executive orders, got rid of that. And that'll also spill over to judicial nominees. With Trump, what we're gonna get now, this is good news, we're gonna get originalist justices like the great Clarence Thomas, who bases his rulings on the Constitution and the intent of the framers. You might remember the idiot Biden when he was gonna nominate a Supreme Court Justice, "I'm gonna nominate a Black woman." No, Joe, you nominate the best person. It doesn't matter. So, that's a positive thing for America. Internationally, how many of you remember the Iran hostage crisis? Jimmy Carter, Ronald Reagan. Jimmy Carter, God rest his soul, a good man, a lousy president. The Iranians were not worried about him. Reagan came on, and they released the hostage. Same thing now. You'll see that the Iranians, excuse me, the Palestinians who attacked and murdered and raped the Israelis on 10/7, they weren't afraid of Joe Biden, the guy who can't even remember what he had for breakfast, but they started coughing up when Trump's in there. And finally, the best piece of legislation, his first piece, guys, was the Lakin-Riley Act was signed. She was a young lady killed by sanctuary city. Her killer, an illegal alien, was released by two different sanctuary cities, and she was brutally murdered. Did you see her mother's testimony? It was heartbreaking, and she thanked Trump and the folks who passed that. So, sanctuary cities are a thing of the past. They're ugly, they're horrible. Trump will take care of that. God bless Trump. God bless ICE.
Thank you. Our next speaker?
Trish Spencer, former council member.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I wanted to speak to this issue, and I want to thank Estella from Building 43 for speaking earlier. This issue that we've heard actually three or four speakers speak to is the civility, discrimination, the way people are treated in Alameda. And I want to speak specifically in regards to Building 43. I have seen when Russo was city manager, him welcoming 43 as the business. I wasn't on council at the time, but great concessions were made and supports were made to make that business successful. That changed, and honestly, I believe it is, in fact, retaliation against Todd and Estella and actions that, specifically Todd's comments and engagement with the mayor. And I think it is a serious problem. I think it's important that our council, and I want to reach out to all of you, to hopefully turn over a new leaf with, hopefully, a new majority that will treat all of the city's tenants fairly, including when they exercise their First Amendment rights to speak here and when they exercise their rights to file secret complaints. They have legal rights, and those rights do not go away because they're renting from the city. And in regards to the discrimination issue, many of you know I was the first Hispanic mayor of the city. I believe I was, in fact, also the only Hispanic council member. When I look up at this council today, and I want to thank the prior speaker, we do not have any Hispanic Americans, we do not have any African-Americans. I think it is something that we need to provide more supports to help everyone be able to serve on council. But I do think that there is this issue going back to Building 43, and in fact, women tenants of the city, because we know we lost Shawna, and then fast forward, which was an anchor Rosenbloom Rockwall. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker?
Gabriel Duncan.
Hello again. So, I just wanted to publicly thank the Alameda Recreation Park Department for hosting our series of events called Acorns, which right now consists of acorn processing workshops, which is gonna happen March 9th and the 23rd. March 9th is already sold out, the 23rd's looking like it's gonna be sold out, too, which is awesome. I'm really thankful that we're gonna get to host this at the Massey Senior Center. We also have another event that's gonna be happening, a series of events happening in April on all the Sundays of April. It's gonna be our Acorns Culinary Series. What we're gonna do is we're gonna highlight the indigenous cuisine, contemporary and traditional, and we're also gonna highlight the similarities that we have between California Native Americans and globally, from Korean acorn jelly to French acorn bread. And this is really exciting. This is the culmination of our first annual acorn harvest. It's gonna happen again, starting in July with the Acorn Granary Challenge this year, and then the actual harvest is gonna go from September through the first week of December. And I just want to let you know ahead of time, this is what we're gonna be doing. We're gonna be shaking city trees and private trees, oak trees, of course, and we are hoping that you will come and join us for one or two times or for every time. So, thank you so much.
Thank you. Our next speaker?
Our last speaker is Todd Hickman.
All right.
Yes, your time should start. You're going. Yeah, start is time.
So, in the interest of turning over a new leaf, why don't we pull that down? I think the FBI is gonna finish that one off for me. So, we'll just let that go. Estella and I were in tractor supply the other day, and she was returning a weed whacker, and the guy was giving her all kinds of grief about her husband and how he must be using that weed whacker commercially and how they didn't want to honor the warranty because, of course, her Mexican husband was running that weed whacker into the ground, you know, commercially. So, you know, you should've seen, look the horror on his face when I came around the corner, and, well, you can just imagine the words I had to have with him and the manager of the store. But, you know, when we're up in the vineyards in Hillbillyville, I expect that kind of racism. But when I'm here in Alameda, I just don't expect the racism I see here in Alameda, but this is even more racist than the foothills. I see nothing but rampant racism in Alameda. I mean, Michelle Pryor, do you teach your grade schoolers about racism? I mean, do you teach them this stuff? Do you tell them how rampant it is in your city? I mean, Baller, do you let this happen? I mean, are you into this as a DA? You know, Assistant DA, you should be all over this kind of stuff. So, it's a shame that this is happening in Alameda, the disparity that I see going on in Alameda, the difference in the way that people are treated. I think we're gonna see more of that tonight. We're gonna see all white males up here with Astro, I'm sure, getting some sweet-ass deal, you know, when we see Latinas and other minorities getting terrible deals, harassed, you know, retaliated against, you name it. So, Alameda, you gotta clean up your act. This is just pathetic. We need a criminal investigation. Baller, is that why you're here? Is that why you're here?
Thank you. And we will now close a public comment on item number four. All right. So, we will move on to... Mr. Hickman, sit down and be quiet, please. Mr. Hickman. Children are watching. Okay. So, we are back to the agenda. Okay. So, we move on to the consent calendar, and these items are routine, and they are approved by one motion unless council members remove items for discussion. Removed items are called after we finish the regular agenda, and council members may speak for up to three minutes on the consent calendar. So, first of all, are there any items on the consent calendar that council wants to pull this evening? Going once, going twice, seeing none? Okay. Madam Clerk, do we have public comment on the consent calendar?
We do. We have three speakers. The first is Gabriel Duncan.
Welcome, Speaker Duncan.
Hi again. Sorry to give you... Sorry to give you whiplash on all these different opinions. My comment is on, I'm Gabriel Duncan. My comment's on number 5B, bills for ratification. When I was reviewing it, I noticed that the file itself wasn't OCR. It didn't have optical character recognition, which makes it hard for people with sight difficulties to be able to review the document. And so I just wanted to mention that, you know, making sure that these files are OCR would be great. And then I also just wanted to mention the Alameda Museum again. I know that the city is paying them to store their historical records. But you know, it's my personal opinion that the Alameda Museum doesn't properly represent the history of all Alamedans. Alameda history is more than Victorian houses. For instance, it was Chinese people who first came here and dyked off the West End. Alameda looks the way it does in large part because of the work of immigrants. Also, Chinese people were here and growing farms and feeding Alamedans. And there were huge farms on the East End. There were farms on top of the old shell mounds. And this is something that we do not have represented in the Alameda Museum. For example, we have many other groups of people who have been here, who have contributed to our history, who have contributed to making Alameda the city that it is today. And that history is not represented in the Alameda Museum. So what I'd like to do is to suggest that it may be more appropriate for the city to move their historical records to a place like City Hall West or to another appropriate venue where you can safeguard your own valuable records, your own valuable items and other things like that, where it won't be under danger of flooding again, because that already happens. And where it will be, it will be on public display or available to the public for viewing, because that is not something that is necessarily available at the Alameda Museum as it stands today. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker?
Todd Hickman.
Welcome Speaker Hickman.
So we got a couple problems on here tonight. We got 5C, Building 114. We never got a certificate of approval to tear down that building. We declared it an emergency and it really wasn't. So once again, the city dropped the ball with SEQA. Mr. Shen, you gave poor advice once again. So again, the city violated that entire process. Now the building appears to be tore down. We completely violated SEQA. So it's time for an all stop. And you have to comply with SEQA, make events, pay restitution and address this issue. Or you can just continue what you usually do and forge forward. But you know, there are going to be consequences to pay. So you probably ought to stop and comply with SEQA. Then we also have 5F, which is more SEQA. On this one though, we have a real serious issue because you're about to commit federal fraud. You're about to take $16 million in federal funding and you're claiming that it's category exempt under SEQA. Well, how would you know that? You failed to go through the process. I mean, once again, the city did not follow the SEQA guidelines. Oh wait, oh wait, how could the city even follow the SEQA guidelines? Because the city hasn't implemented lead agency procedures since like 1984, 1986. So anything the city says or does in relation to SEQA is null and void because the city does not have the authority to be the lead agency because the city hasn't implemented proper procedures. So the city is not even an authorized lead agency. So whatever the city says in relation to SEQA is null and void. So you have to actually have proper procedures in place to be a lead agency. And if you had those proper procedures in place and were actually a real lead agency, then you would know that there's a process to go through and you would have to jump through the steps to make sure that you followed all the SEQA guidelines, gave the public opportunities to input and you know, talk about it. And you know, just make sure you do the SEQA process correctly. So everybody is involved, all the stakeholders, the community, you know, everyone. So when you say that the project is categorically exempt under SEQA, you would actually be right. But again, you didn't follow the SEQA guidelines. And even if you did, it would be null and void because you actually are not an authorized lead agency because you haven't implemented guidelines since 1984. So once again, the city has failed and they're about to take $16 million, which is going to be federal.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Madam Clerk?
Is remote.
Oh, we have a remote speaker?
Uh huh, Paul Boustarian.
Oh, Paul Boustarian. All right, welcome Speaker Boustarian.
Hi everyone, this is Paul Boustarian. Wanted to speak in favor of 5D. After the winter storms recently, there was severe damage along the Bay Farm shoreline. So this is badly needed. So appreciate this being agendized and prioritized. Also wanted to follow up and thank the council for moving ahead with the adaptation plans last month. I think that hopefully will move things towards so we won't have emergencies like this in the future. So thanks for that. And then finally, wanted to call out going with, going with... I'm sorry, I lost my notes. I'm McGuire and Hester for doing the work. I recently got a chance to meet them and see some of the impressive projects they've done. And them being right on the shoreline, they'll be doubling incentives to do a great job. They're an Alameda company, so that all looks good. So looking forward to seeing your support for this. Thanks.
Thank you. Our next speaker?
That was our last speaker.
Okay, with that, we will close public comment on the consent calendar. And so now I'm looking for council comments or a motion to approve the consent calendar. Any comments, any motion?
I just had a couple comments.
Sure.
On...
Vice Mayor Prior.
On 5F, I'm just really glad to see that we're going to have construction to improve Lincoln Avenue. I know there have been some accidents there, so this is just, I'm very grateful for this. And then for 5G, there was a phrase in here. It says, "To update the salary schedules to more accurately reflect the hours worked and ensure equitable compensation." And I was glad to see that. So, and those are my comments.
Thank you for your comments. Anything further or a motion? Councilmember Desai?
Great, just a quick comment. I too would like to express my joy and enthusiasm for seeing item 5F. You know, years ago, probably maybe it was 1975 when we were little kids. I remember a friend of ours, Lawrence Lagdeman. We were over on Longfellow Park and he crossed the street at Lincoln Avenue and Linden Avenue, where Longfellow Park is, and he got hit by a car. And I just remember how all of us kids were just mortified because it happened right in front of us. And you know, we were all bawling and crying. Fortunately, Lawrence turned out to be okay. He was badly injured, but he totally okay.
How old were you?
Always the quick athlete that he was.
Councilmember, how old were you?
Oh God, maybe nine years old in 1975, yeah.
Yeah.
It might have been, it's 1974, can't remember. But so you know, and it is, it is an area where there's a lot of kids, you know, crossing Lincoln Avenue, including continuing to cross over at Linden and Lincoln. So you know, to see this project move forward, I enthusiastically support this.
And not to throw any cold water on anything, but as my people say, Inshallah. Madam City Manager, anything we should know or keep in mind about item 5F? As in federal?
It is federal funding. And given some of the announcements last week about federal funding freezes and some additional requirements and criteria we've received from the Department of Transportation, given that this agreement hasn't been signed yet, there is a risk that this doesn't move forward. We were going to submit it and we're going to hope that it does. But I do want to temper our expectations that we, since we don't have a signed agreement from the federal government at this point, there is some risk that we don't receive this money.
Well, let's hope that it passes.
We will all think positive thoughts. Okay, and in addition to positive thoughts, do we have a motion or further comments? Was that a move approval? Councilmember Jensen moves approval, seconded by Vice Mayor Prior. All of them were all present, so we can do voice votes. All those in favor of approving the consent calendar with those comments, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
No opposed, no abstentions, I heard. Okay, thank you for that. Okay, we move along to some fun things. Madam Clerk, could you please introduce item 7A?
Adoption of Resolutions Appointing Joshua Bevan and Arthur Brito as members of the Historical Advisory Board.
All right, so council, you have before you a resolutions appointing these two community members as members of the Historical Advisory Board. I say this often, but it is so true. We have amazing residents and they are so generous to contribute their time and talent to serving the city. It's just such a pleasure to do the interviews and these two are no exception. So I will tell you just a little bit, I think maybe they're going to tell you a bit about themselves. But Josh Bevan is a... So many papers here. Josh Bevan is a... Oh yeah, he does important work in professional architectural historical cultural resources planner. He's been practicing in the Bay Area since 2016. Has a really impressive resume and he's going to be a great addition to the Historic Advisory Board. And I know you're going to come up and make some additional comments. And then Arthur Brito, you know, just about had me at hello because not only is he a graduate of UC Davis, Go Aggies. He drove the double-decker bus. Anybody who knows UC Davis knows that's one of the ways you get around campus. I think that's just an awesome qualification. He is also a landscape architect. And he met his wife, who was also a driver of the double-decker bus. So look at that. Anyway, he's been 26 years in residential landscape design and the last 21 years with his own business that's based here in Alameda. So what we need is, we have a resolution before us that will approve both of these individuals as members of the Historic Advisory Board. And we have a public comment. All right, so go ahead.
To now, Todd Hickman.
All right, welcome Speaker Hickman. Your time is running, Mr. Hickman, you might want to speak. No, they cannot actually. This is public, this is public comment. I'm sure you do. This is public comment.
Well, you know, their resumes make them look highly qualified and I support that. I think that was a good move. So I just want to point out to these individuals how much power they do have on the Historic Advisory Board. And I hope that they can dig deep and you know, harness the intestinal fortitude to do the right thing. The right thing has not been done in Alameda for a long time. We know that. There's been no certificate of approvals issued in many, many years. I think we just had one recently. A colleague of mine has been calling out for all time and the council and other boards and other boards and individuals within this city have been saying that it wasn't needed. And clearly it was, because now they're starting to issue certificates of approval. So that is a big deal. And again, you two individuals will have lots of power on this Historic Advisory Board. And everything really does start with you. So hopefully, again, you can do the right thing and only issue certificates of approval when it is justly deserved and it does comply. As you probably know, my main interest is with the Naval Air Station and within the historic district. As you also know, the Ashcraft regime has been violating that district and trying to make it light industrial manufacturing, trying to clog the view corridors, reduce the 180-foot view corridors down to 60 feet, basically trying to ruin the city's most precious resource on the base, which is the view. It is a tragic shame. We can see that when we drive down West Tower, you know, 10 years ago or more now, that when we opened, I used to look to my left and see nothing but water, see the Hornet. Now I see sale drones junk blocking the view. That is a SEQA issue, that will be coming. You see the slots on the fences. You see all the stuff going on in the view corridors. And the views again, are the city's most precious resource. Not to mention, only customer service businesses are supposed to go on the point. Businesses that generate sales tax revenue, that's a very important concept on the point. Sales tax revenue generating businesses. Businesses that actually serve the public and make it better out there. Preserve the view corridors, keep it open, keep it beautiful, improve the point. Not this junk that this industrial manufacturing sector brings, clogging these view corridors and just basically junking it up, bringing no value to the people. Sure, it creates a few jobs, but you know, we see like Nutella that promised hundreds of jobs and there's like 30.
Time's up, our next speaker, Madam Clerk?
Gabrielle Duncan. Gabrielle Duncan.
Gabrielle, welcome Speaker Duncan.
Hello again, I'm Gabriel Duncan. Really happy that I got to speak to the Historic Advisory Board specifically because I just always seem to never be able to make their actual like meetings. As you know, I'm the founder of the Alameda Native History Project. The one thing that I wanted to do at the very beginning of founding this project was to learn about the local native history, the history of the Aloney people who have been here for over 10,000 years. And I wasn't able to find that in the Alameda Museum, of course. So I had to do my own research. And I found out that we didn't just have one shell mound, that we had, we had a shell mound at the foot of Chestnut. We had a shell mound by Cruzy Park. We had a shell mound there on Mound Street. And we also had another shell mound on Bay Farm. This is something that people don't know about. It's not something that we talk about. There's a lot of construction that's being done in these zones where these shell mounds used to be. There's a lot of SEQA exemptions that are happening that actually probably shouldn't because of the Native American Graves Protection Repatriation Act. And this is something that really should be at least talked about or mentioned, you know? Somebody should ask the question like, hey, is this where the burial ground was? And the other thing is that, once again, Alameda history is more than Victorian houses. We have a great opportunity as we move forward to honor all of the people in Alameda and to honor their contributions and to celebrate the histories of all of these different people for making Alameda the city that it is today. And this can be done through creating new special historical districts. And I think revisiting a lot of the chapters of our history, such as the takeover of Franklin Park and the struggle for housing over on the base. These are excellent starting points where we can actually address the difficulties that we've had in our past. And we can do something positive to move through that and try and heal and also come together as a community behind this idea of healing and moving forward. So I just want to put that out there and just mention these points. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker?
That was our last speaker.
Okay, with that, we will close public comment. And we will entertain a motion to approve the resolution approving our two new members of the Historic Advisory Board. Councilmember Bowler, you want to make a motion? All right, it's been moved by Councilmember Bowler, seconded by Councilmember Jensen. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, Madam Clerk, I turn it over to you.
If you'll raise your right hand. Do you solemnly sort of hold the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California and that you will well and faithfully discharge the duty of command about to enter? All right, if you'll sign.
So we're just observing, maybe it's the uniform of the HAB, but are you two wearing matching shirts? You didn't coordinate? We'll take your word for that. All right, so who's going to go first? All right, all right, please introduce yourself and go ahead and make the microphone where you need it. Hi.
Thank you Mayor Aziz Ashcraft for your nomination and to the council for your appointment.
and to the council for your appointment. My name's Josh Bevan. I'm an architectural historian, and I work for a firm called Rincon Consultants. I've been an Alameda resident since 2020, arrived here the first week of the pandemic. So, it was a great place to be sheltered in place and walk around. I've been in the Bay Area since 2016, and during that time, I've worked for architectural firms, environmental planning firms, primarily as an architectural historian or cultural resources planner. So, I've gotten to collaborate with architects, landscape architects, urban planners, stakeholders. And more recently in my career, I've started to work with archaeologists more often, getting familiar with things like AB-52 and SB-18, really understanding the broader gamut of what cultural resources is. And I think certainly in Alameda, it's great to have a Historic Advisory Board, not just an architectural critique board, so to speak, right? Something that really looks at the broad spectrum of history. And I think of, in terms of the field, where it's at, it's certainly ascendant in terms of reaching beyond buildings, and I look forward to applying my knowledge of the field and willingness to learn more to the board.
Thank you so much. We appreciate your willing to share your time and talents. Mr. Brito, come on up.
Hello, good evening. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, councilmembers, for this appointment. I appreciate it very much. I'm very excited to be part of the board. Yes, as the mayor mentioned, I'm a former double-decker driver. It was the greatest college job, but I have to say, it hurt my GPA, because that's all I wanted to do was drive double-deckers. And my parents were like, so what are you majoring in? We thought it was landscape architecture, and that is what I studied, but my GPA did suffer. I did meet my wife that way, though, so it worked out okay. So, I am a landscape designer here in town. As the mayor mentioned, I've been practicing residential landscape design, some small commercial, but primarily residential landscape design for about 26 years and 21 years as the owner of my own company. The majority of my business is here in Alameda, and I love working with people who moved here for the same reasons that I did, and that's really to be part of this great community and live in these great old houses. So, whenever I work with a client, I'm always paying attention to the architecture. I'm a bit of a, I'm not a trained historian, but more of a historical junkie, sort of, an appreciator, I should say. So, I'm very excited about being part of this Advisory Board. So, thank you for the opportunity.
We're excited to. Thank you so much. Congratulations to both of you. All right. Moving right along, we will move on to item 7B. Madam Clerk, will you introduce this item, please?
Recommendation to accept an informational report on updates of the Alameda Police Department.
And, Council, I think that this is going to be a report that is probably going to need more than 10 minutes, and all we need is a vote of four councilmembers. I think it'll be unanimous. But how much time do you think, what do you think you need? And be generous, is it 15, 20? What do you need for the presentation?
Good evening, Madam Mayor. So, we did a couple of practice runs without any errors. We can get it done in 16 minutes.
Why don't we call it 20, just in case you, you know, freeze up or something? So, Council, normally a staff report is 10 minutes, but could we vote to raise it to 20 minutes? Do I have a motion?
It's been moved.
It's been moved by the Vice Mayor, seconded by Councilmember Daysoh to give the, our speakers from APD, 20 minutes for the staff report. All those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? There are none, so welcome. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Ezie Ashcraft, members of the City Council and city staff. My name is Alan Kubayama, and I'm a police captain. I'm here with Chief Joshi, and we will be presenting an update on the efforts made by your staff at the police department. In 2021, a group of community volunteers convened to make recommendations to the city manager on the future of the Alameda Police Department. They provided a report that contained several recommendations to ensure compliance with industry standards and best practices in policing. Since 2021, APD has adopted these recommendations and implemented additional policies, procedures, and systems. Going back to that time, Chief Joshi was hired in June of 2021. He came to us after 23 years with the Oakland Police Department. He brought within vast knowledge on best practices around accountability and public safety, and a track record on significantly reducing crime through a data-driven and intelligence-led approach, leveraging stakeholder relationships, and improving community relations centered on procedural justice. During his first three months, Chief Joshi met individually with every employee to understand where APD stood and to share his vision on where we intend to go. In January 2023, the department hired a crime analyst to support a data-driven and intelligence-led approach. In March of 2023, we obtained approval to implement a hiring incentive. In July of 2023, the city hired a police auditor to access relevant information to make timely recommendations to the chief on operations, policies, and procedures. And then in July of 2021, and again, just this past month, we implemented two reorganizations to improve our efficiency. The first created a new division under the Office of Chief of Police to prioritize training, hiring, and accountability, and the second created a third bureau known as the Bureau of Professional Standards. The executive team, which is comprised of the chief and three captains, now have direct oversight over all of our department's functions. In 2021, there were numerous vacant leadership positions being filled by people serving in an acting role. Within 90 days, several promotions were made, to include three lieutenants and three sergeants. To date, there have been additional promotions and hires to include one captain, four lieutenants, 14 sergeants, and 53 new officers. In total, there have been 78 sworn positions filled either by hiring or promotions. However, the rate of attrition has been significant and is an area of vulnerability. It takes between 14 and 16 months from application to when a new officer completes training. APD realized the need to hire at a rate greater than our attrition. So, in March of 2023, the council unanimously voted to support the nation's largest hiring incentive. The incentive offers all sworn candidates two payments. $25,000 is given upon swearing-in, and $50,000 is given upon completion of field training. In return, the candidate must commit to five years of service with APD. Any service short of five years requires repayment at a prorated amount of $10,000 per year. The impact of the incentive has been impressive. During the first three years, excuse me, during the three years preceding the initiative, we received the equivalent of 17 applications per month. After the initiative, this number increased to 55 per month. And then when looking at the rate at which people were hired, that number doubled. The incentive has allowed us to select from a much greater pool of applicants, ensuring that we maintain very high standards of selection. Since 2021, we have filled 107 positions, 53 of which were for police officers. And of those 53, 62% were after the hiring incentive. An area of success to date is that patrol division is fully staffed, and all professional staff positions are filled. Turning to our attention on policies and training, POST is a body that governs hiring and training standards for police officers and dispatchers throughout the entire state. Although participation is not required, APD is a POST-certified agency. POST requires 24 hours of training every 24 months. APD exceeds that number by approximately 10 times. Instruction includes topics such as community policing, use of force, de-escalation, crisis intervention, first aid, tactics, vehicle operations, and any other current relevant subject matter. Key policy updates were also made on the use-of-force policy, use-of-force review boards, handcuffing and restraints, internal affairs misconduct investigations, vehicle pursuits, K-9 deployment, mental health resource, and militarized equipment. With use-of-force incidents, there are multiple levels of review. In addition to internal review processes, independent reviews are conducted by the police auditor. The police auditor is Dr. Lee Grossman, and she is assigned to the city office, city attorney's office. Dr. Grossman has an extensive background in data analysis and managing risk in police operations. Dr. Grossman regularly monitors APD performance by reviewing use-of-force reports, misconduct complaints, vehicle pursuits, body-worn cameras, arrests, on-duty collisions, community feedback, staffing, and training. Our focus on training has resulted in a total of 7,330 training hours for sworn personnel and 495 training hours for professional staff in 2024. Additionally, APD and Dr. Grossman are in the process of working with the Commission on Accreditation for Law Enforcement Agencies, referred to as CALEA, to establish a set of professional standards for APD. CALEA is a highly recognized organization that assists police agencies with developing best practices that exceed industry standards. Very few agencies have achieved CALEA accreditation. It is anticipated that APD should achieve accreditation within three years. Dr. Grossman applied for and was awarded grant funding in the amount of $224,000 to assist with this process. Moving on to technology, our reliance on performing, improving resources, performance-improving resources was low in 2021. We knew we needed to develop initiatives around the community, receiving input, internal accountability, operations, and crime fighting, so we identified technologies with use. APD purchased Spyder Tech to ensure timely communications with anyone calling APD for service. The system sends text messages to callers about any delays in our response time and also sends a survey to rate their interactions with the dispatcher and the responding officers. The scores from surveys are published daily, and any unsatisfactory scores receive a follow-up call from a watch commander. The goal of this call is to make sure that we understand where service fell short and allows us the opportunity to explain our policies and procedures. Additionally, APD was the first department in California to purchase technology that reviews 100% of body-worn camera footage. Truleo allows APD leadership to assess police officer performance in real time to identify excellent service as well as growth opportunities. The system provides coaching opportunities and sends praise to officers when they exceed expectations. In addition, council approved the purchase of static license plate reader technology throughout the city. These cameras are strategically installed at all entry and exit points of Alameda. Council also approved mobile license plate reader systems in all patrol vehicles, which also includes an in-car camera system to support our operations. Through the use of technology, Spyder Tech has allowed us to receive immediate community feedback, respond to them in a timely manner, address performance, and provide training to employees. Truleo has allowed us to review 100% of camera footage, ensuring that we are monitoring the performance of our officers, providing coaching where needed, and identifying employee wellness opportunities. And the license plate reader technology has allowed us to improve our crime-fighting response. The cameras identify vehicles that may be involved in criminal activities so we can determine where crime is occurring. This also has helped us reduce our footprint in the community. Now, I'll turn it over to the chief.
Thank you, Captain Kubayama. Welcome, Chief Joshi.
All right. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. I'm going to go over operations. When we first got here, we did some initial observations and recognized that we probably could have, do a little bit better with coordination. So, in 2021, APD began applying a data-driven and intelligence-led approach to crime-fighting. The city was redistricted based on where we were receiving calls for service from and crime trends. APD went from having five beats to three areas under a geographic command system. Each area consists of four beats and is commanded by a lieutenant who is responsible for all crime-fighting efforts and responsibilities 24/7. In 2023, we created a fourth area, which consists of all Alameda businesses. Although this area is not geographically based because businesses are citywide, APD understands and recognizes crimes at businesses contribute significantly to the overall crime numbers. As such, a fourth commander was assigned to the businesses. As recommended by the Police Reform and Racial Equity Steering Committee, APD hired crime analyst Dr. Club, who serves a critical role. Dr. Club reviews crime data on a 24-hour, a 72-hour, a 96-hour, a two-week and a four-week basis, and prepares a report for each period. These reviews are distributed to all command staff to operationalize strategies in real time. APD has adopted a CompStat approach to the strategic deployment of resources to ensure personnel and operations occur based on real-time data. CompStat meetings are held every four weeks, so area commanders are made aware of crime trends and patterns. In summary, we have to regularly study crime trends to identify the what, where, when, why, how, and who. Every time, we know what has occurred, when it has occurred, and where it has occurred. Sometimes, we know why it's occurred and how it's occurred, and then we endeavor to identify who's responsible. With community policing, outreach, and relationships as a priority with APD, every area commander sets regular community meetings, community beat meetings. At these meetings, crime trends relevant to that specific neighborhood are shared for awareness. In the interest of collaboration, this also offers APD to understand and hear firsthand community priorities, concerns, and expectations. Crime can be broken down into crimes against persons and property crimes. Fortunately, crimes against persons are not prevalent in Alameda. Therefore, the driver of crime is property crimes. Although property crimes include a wide array of crimes, we drill down to look at what specifically property crimes, what specific property crimes are driving our crime, and saw that larceny thefts, auto thefts, and burglaries were the drivers. Larceny thefts are relatively flat as we closed out 2024 with a slight decrease of 1%. Auto thefts were up 24%. Now, this is a consistent trend throughout the region. However, burglaries were down significantly by 52%. I'm going to talk about current trends. Although we are seeing an astonishing 52% decrease in traditional burglaries, we are seeing a new trend throughout the state. These burglaries are focused on businesses and commercial enterprise. The offenders are very strategic and work in teams. In summary, these burglary crews use a vehicle to create a point of entry into a business, sometimes, most often by crashing into them, and then enter the business to steal merchandise with getaway cars waiting nearby. In Alameda, we did have three incidents in a one-week period in our business district. To address this trend, APD will continue to leverage the existing technology, cameras, and other forensic evidence to identify and apprehend offenders. Outcomes. So, the city saw drops in total crime in all months of 2024, other than February and March. Industry standards suggest an annual reduction of crime from 5% to 10% is significant. In 2024, the city saw an overall reduction in crime by nearly 13%. In comparison to other cities in the region, Alameda is one of the safest cities with a low crime rate, with a low rate of crime against persons. APD provides support through a crime prevention-through-environmental-design approach. Several APD staff members have received in-depth training on crime prevention through environmental design and prepare relevant reports and recommendations to affected businesses. Since 2021, traffic enforcement citations have increased by approximately 62%. Staff prioritizes dangerous vehicle code violations when engaged in traffic enforcement. Additionally, APD works closely with Vision Zero and Public Works staff to incorporate a holistic approach towards traffic safety by targeting enforcement efforts along the city's high-injury corridors. Moving forward, we're committed to safety in our city. APD demonstrates an ongoing commitment to community safety through transparency, accountability, and effective policing initiatives. Big on collaborative efforts. Partnership with community fosters collaboration. We invite the public's input to enhance policing strategies and effectiveness. We look for feedback from our community. We actively encourage continued community feedback to adapt policies and refine service delivery moving forward. Staffing and retention, that is a high priority. I have learned that there's, it's so challenging to get someone in the door. It's a long process, so that is a high priority. And thank you to City Council for helping us get, make the headway that we've made. And in closing, I want to say that professionally, I'm extremely proud of this organization. I see the hard work by our officers and our professional staff every single day. As a resident of this community, I'm extremely proud to know that the Alameda Police Department keeps our community safe in the most procedurally just way that's out there. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you. And I will say, you two were spot on with your time estimate. She still has a little laugh. Are there any clarifying questions from Council about the staff report? Let's start with Vice Mayor Pryor, and then Councilmember Jensen, and then I've got one. Okay, go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Well, before my question, I just want to say thank you. I moved to Alameda because I like to go running at night, and that as a, you know, as a woman, that's nothing, you know? I don't take that for granted, so thank you. But my question is, you had said that commanders have regular community meetings. I was wondering how this is communicated to residents and where the meetings happen and about how often they happen.
Sure. So, it's on our website. What a resident does is they go to our website, look for community meetings. You put in your address, and then it'll let you know what beat you're assigned to. Then you click on that beat, and it'll tell you when your community meetings are.
Was that all for you?
Oh, that is all. Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Jensen.
Thank you, chief. That was a, I'm really happy, and I do know from personal experience as well as from comments from my neighbors as well as others in Alameda that you've been doing, our APD's been doing a great job, and crime is down in Alameda. It's good to know. Can you talk for a minute about, you didn't mention specifically domestic violence? Can you, um, talk for a minute about, you didn't mention specifically domestic violence, so I'd just like to see where that fits in and if that's following the trend that you've already mentioned.
Yeah, so when I look at, um, crimes against persons, the drivers are assaults. Um, and when we looked at the, the types of assaults, uh, a larger, a greater majority of them are, um, domestic violence. And so we do have partnerships with, uh, community-based organizations. Um, we wanna have, again, a holistic approach to, to victims of domestic violence, um, more than just taking a report and referring it for prosecution. We wanna look long game. How do we get, um, how do, how do we get a, a long-term solution? Because, um, when people call 911, when they call the police, a lot of things have failed, so we wanna bring those services back into the fold. Um, you, you, um, well, I'll, I'll stop there.
Well, thank you. I mean, and that leads to my next question. You, um, we do have a unique partnership that you, the Alameda Police Department, has with our, um, city attorney in terms of being able to prosecute some crimes, including some domestic violence crimes. And so I just wanted to ask you if that has been, uh, behind or, or supporting some of these reductions that you've mentioned.
Our partnership with the city attorney's office has been incredible. Um, we, we are able to, um, refer cases over. We're the only city, uh, I believe in Northern California, that has, uh, the ability to have our city attorney to prosecute misdemeanor cases. Um, the DA's office has, has, has a significant, uh, caseload. Uh, I, I can tell you that many, well, all the other cities in Alameda County, sometimes those, uh, misdemeanor crimes don't get prosecuted. Fortunately, here in Alameda, we have our city attorney that steps up and takes those cases on. Um, I think that having that as a resource to the Alameda Police Department, to the residents of, residents and businesses and, and visitors of Alameda is huge. I, I say that, I, I think that our, our crime reductions have been collaborative. I think it's, it's because of community, it's because of the engagement. Um, I mean, the, these reductions are significant. I, I didn't, I failed to mention earlier, to date, uh, for the year of 2025, we are at about a 30% reduction in, in crime incidents. The, these are astonishing numbers. It's because we are, we have the systems in place, we have the, the, the wraparound services that are available and we're able to approach it from a very strategic stance. We made some adjustments this year. Uh, in 2025, we, it's called the watch change. That's when the previous year ends, the new, uh, uh, teams come on. Um, and so we, we moved our shifts around because we looked at the data. When, uh, when are we peaking in crime? And, and we looked at those times and we moved our shifts, uh, to, to address that. At this point, we have, we are able to have, um, all our beats filled during those peak times. Um, I credit Captain McMullin for being strategic, for being, uh, thorough, for being diligent. Um, he measures crime not by the day, I would say by the hour. I go into his office and he's looking at his board and he's counting the numbers. Um, he, he's, he's, uh, significant. So everyone is firing, uh, on, on all cylinders to, to make sure that we're, we're, we're achieving this, these results.
And finally, um, thank you for answering all of my questions. I did provide some input regarding this report, and I want to point out just, um, in my estimation and the, the review that I've done, there's been about a 50% reduction in vehicle, pedestrian and bicycle collisions just in the past two years, and that's tremendous. So keep that up, thanks.
Thank you.
I've got a question from the, um, staff report, which is, um, it was mentioned and it's on page five of the staff report.
I'm sorry, Madam Mayor, what page did you say?
Page five.
Okay.
Um, also, I have the frozen, the frozen iPad, but to the best of my recollection, there was a downward trend in crime last year in 2024, except for the months of, I think it was February and March, was that it?
Yes.
So what happened in February and March of 2024?
Um, you know, crime is, is, crime moves and it adjusts, um, and so we have to adjust our strategies. Uh, you know, we're, we're, we're successful most of the time.
Yeah.
And so, you know, I can't put my finger on what specifically happened during that, those months, uh, but we liked, like I said, we look at crime so regularly. Um, during those month periods, if you look at the two-week, the 96-hour, the 72-hours, we had drops there, but overall for those months, it was slightly up. It wasn't a huge uptick, it was just slightly up. What I was trying to underscore is that the whole year, we were, we were having crime drops, um, consistent crime drops, other than those two months, and they were slightly above.
Thank you. All right, thank you so much. No other council clarifying questions, so let's go to public comment, Madam Clerk. Thank you.
Okay, and the first is Amos White.
Chief, you can take a seat, this is just public comment now. Welcome, um, Speaker White.
Good evening, council members and Mayor Ashcraft. Um, my name is Amos White. I am an Alameda resident, a proud parent of two Enstino High School graduates and a proud father and husband as well. I want to thank the chief and staff and APD, um, for your presentation and more so for your service in our public safety, so thank you. And thank you, Mayor Ashcraft, for your recognition of Black History Month and for celebrating, if you will, the achievements and just the existence, um, if you will, of, of, of the contributions of Black Alamedans. Given the public's, the public history of our city's disproportionate actions upon communities of color here in Alameda, it's, it's, it's well-known and documented. I was just struck that there was no demographic data on the impact from the police department's report, um, on the impact of APD and its response and actions within our city and residents. We had such a report before, prior to this chief, to benchmark so we can see the progress that we're making. I think it's really important that we have that in future, so we can see how we are supporting everyone here within Alameda and the impacts that APD does have. This particularly is important as we continue to improve as a city. And I point this out because now, w- we're in a very different time, uh, with the federal administration, and it's not just black people, it's people of color. In particular, our immigrants. In 2017, um, upon the first executive order which targeted immigrants, um, Alamedans came together with ACLU People Power to hold a town hall on immigration. Yesterday, we affirmed our sanctuary city status and we call on the city government to accept the letters that, um, Shalom Broom presented.
Your time is up. Thank you, Speaker White. Thank you, our, thank you. Our next speaker?
Jennifer Rakowski.
Welcome, Speaker Rakowski.
I want to appreciate, uh, being one of the more than 50 individuals who participated in the racial equity and police reform. I had the honor of being one of the participants in the police oversight and that propelled me here today. Um, some of the things that I did not see spoken about in the report, um, were some of the things that our committee particularly focused on. So one was use of force, and I have provided, uh, letter to city council and I will not try and duplicate those numbers that I provided, and I apologize, it was written on my phone, so all errors are mine. But, uh, there was additional training that the police department did in 2024 that can be a partial account of why the numbers of use of force reports jumped between 2022 and 2023. But the use of force reports continue to climb and continue to climb significantly, particularly along the category of what's considered low levels of use of force. And I really encourage the city council to drill down on some of those incidents. They have been incidents that have led previously to citywide protests or to lawsuits, and they are a vulnerability for this city. Um, more data about that is also in the, uh, city data that is supplied to the RIPA report, um, at a state level. And I do encourage all of you to read and drill down on the RIPA report that provides some of that racial and gender and age data for the city.
Thank you so much, your time is up. Our next speaker?
Trish Spencer?
Welcome, Speaker Spencer.
First of all, I want to thank our police chief, every officer and the entire, uh, department for their services. I also want to thank, um, I'm not sure who puts out the monthly, uh, crime report on, uh, online to share it, but I appreciate seeing that. And when I look at the December numbers and compare to just, you know, it may or may not turn out to be a trend, but I do encourage everyone to look at those numbers to see, you know, how, how'd we do in December and what, what does that look like? Animal cruelty, and I don't know if that was already shared, we had an increase of the past 12 months of 71%. We had one case in December, so if that continues, it's 12 for the past year and it would be 12 for this coming year. And even though it was only one case, that is a significant problem for our community. Arson, a year-to-date, we had a 45% increase. We had four cases in December, so obviously if that continues, that continues, that would be 52 cases on a yearly basis and that is a serious problem. I mean, obviously, we've had a lot of damage as a result of arson. Burglary, we had a 37% reduction year-to-date, but we had 27 cases in December, which would equate to 312 per year, which is higher than the past 12 months, which was 192. Assault, we had, um, an 8% increase, uh, but 60 cases in December, which would be 720 on a yearly basis, and again, uh, that is, would be above. So I encourage everyone to look at those numbers to see where we're going and, but, but at the end of the day, kudos to our police department.
Thank you, our next speaker?
Todd Hickman.
Welcome, Speaker Hickman.
I have nothing but positive things to say about Chief Yoshi and his department. The police, Alameda Police, Public Works, Building, Fire, um, I've had nothing but good experiences with these departments, um, very contrary to what I've had with the council and, um, upper management and the other departments in the city. So again, I'm very thankful that at least half the city is doing a fabulous job. Um, and we have had, um, significant contact with the Alameda Police Department in the last six months, um, between the threats we received due to the mayor, um, promoting her minions to, um, conduct crimes against us due to what she, um, believes, um, and all the other things, the negative publicity and the slander she committed against us. We had all kinds of threats, um, all kinds of stuff happening. Mr. Shan committed a felony, um, with his illegal and felonious, um, fraudulent inspection warrants, um, so we had police interaction for that. Um, it's a wonder he still has a license to practice law. Um, but whatever the case, we've had significant interaction with the Alameda Police Department over the last six months and in some very bizarre cases, um, or very bizarre circumstances due to what's been going on. And, um, they always acted incredibly professional with us and did their job incredibly well. They did not show bias towards us. Um, with the racism against my partner, Ms. Viagraana, um, they were very professional and they did not carry on, um, what I believe the city instructed them to do, city upper, you know, upper management. And if we were in a city where the police department carried out the threats and crimes of the council and upper management, we would have a real problem on our hands. Um, but due to Chief Yoshi's professionalism and the professionalism of his department, um, we've been able to continue to survive and we do not feel threatened at all, um, by the city, um, or by the police department because of this. So again, that's huge, that is a huge concept. Thank you, Chief Yoshi.
Thank you for your comments. Our, our next speaker?
Alex Sphere.
Uh, remote?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Welcome, Speaker Sphere.
Um, hi, I just want to encourage the city to improve the ability of businesses to go and add bollards or something, so that this new trend of, oh, I'll just drive a car into a business storefront, um, to steal everything, um, isn't encouraged. Um, replacing just a plate glass window is very expensive for a small business, replacing the entire storefront is even worse. Um, so anything the city can do to, you know, put in nice planters or something to make it harder to smash cars into, um, storefronts, restaurants, businesses, um, I would think that's a bad thing, and maybe the city can help some. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker?
Marilyn Rothman.
Welcome, Speaker Rothman.
Um, I'm, uh, concerned about the police action outside of the city limits. A published report show that the armed emergency response vehicle is used more often outside of Alameda in, uh, surrounding cities like Oakland, Emeryville, Tracy, Hayward and Pittsburgh than it is within our city limits. Often, this is in conjunction with the U.S. Marshal Service. Given recent changes to immigration enforcement, how can this practice be squared with the city's sanctuary city policy? Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker?
That was our last speaker.
All right, with that, we will close public comment on, um, this item and we'll open the floor to council comment. This is a for information, um, item only. Why don't I start on my far right, um, with you, Councilmember Desag. Any comments?
Sure. Well, first of all, I want to say thank you very much to Chief Yoshi, um, especially to the women and men who serve, um, as sworn officers and, and non-torn, um, personnel. Um, you know, you do so much, um, putting your staff, putting their, um, their, their lives out there on behalf of the residents to keep us safe. Um, I think the, the data certainly bears out that, that the reforms that you've put in place are, are working. I know, you know, whenever we meet, um, other, um, police, um, officers, um, from, from other cities, you know, one of the things they always kind of rib us about is that, that $75,000 incentive. Um, and, and to me, that's something to be greatly proud of, and I think, you know, it has done, the, the report that you put together demonstrates that, that it has incentivized people so that we can begin to staff our police force at the levels that, that we, that, that we need. So, um, I just, you know, appreciate the reforms that you put in place, um, not just, you know, what you discussed tonight, but, you know, even working, you know, having the police department working with the care team so that the care team can handle, um, uh, non-violent emergency calls that might involve someone, you know, who's, um, experiencing some kind of, um, mental health episode. Um, you know, to have the police force, you know, um, kind of step back and let the, the care team handle that, but, but be there should, should, you know, you be needed, I think, you know, exemplifies, you know, the type of reforms that we've put in place in the aftermath of, um, unfortunate, uh, situations in the city of Alameda. So, you know, I think what that reflects is a city hall that is certainly responsive to the changing needs of Alameda. You know, I want to close by saying that, you know, I encourage the residents of Alameda to regularly check in on the website of our police department because, um, there you'll see monthly, um, reports of the police auditors. You know, it's, it's all there, so you can kind of see, you know, the trends that are happening. So I appreciate, you know, the, the transparency that, that the police department has, has demonstrated, um, over these recent years. Um, and, um, I appreciate also the fact that, you know, the, the city council and previous past city councils have been very supportive in, in adopting, you know, technologies that can, um, you know, assist you guys in, in doing the work that you do. So keep up the good job and I appreciate it, and I, and I know that the residents, um, feel tremendous confidence in, in everything that the women and men do for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Bowler?
I would just echo Councilmember Desag's comments about, you know, the Chief Yoshi, your practices, your, your efforts to really lead this agency in a really positive direction. I mean, to see the intersection of this data with all these efforts at making, you know, reforms. We heard in your presentation a lot about organizational accountability, and I know the citizens of the city are really, you know, impressed when the police department can take the time to make sure that our police officers live up to the highest standards. And the training hours are pretty, pretty impressive that you presented for, um, as departments go for police officers. There were themes also about using data, using intelligence that's really important, I think, going forward. The ability of our department to use not just technology, but also the resources of people and organizing around, you know, this data and trying to figure out where can they have the most impact. We are dealing with a problem now that's hopefully a short-term one with the businesses and some of those crimes. Um, the fact that the police department has a specific, um, focus on that as being a se- separate section for, with a specific lieutenant, a commander, assigned to it, I think, um, speaks volumes about that priority. It's really important in talking to, um, community residents to see the police officers, to see kind of that traditional community policing. I know that there are many of the residents want to see their officers more and more, so I'm hopeful that now that we have a fully staffed- we can do more things that will bring the community and the force together to, you know, in shared opportunities to make this place even safer. So thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Pryor.
Well, oh, sorry. I spoke before, so.
Okay. You said it all. Yeah, good. All right. Councilmember Jensen.
Thank you. Thank you for the report. I do actually have another question or I request a little more information about something, something that I think that APD is doing well. I know that we've heard a little bit about the BEET meetings, about the meetings for the public, which I've attended on occasion, and I encourage people, living residents, to attend the meetings. And if you could just share information a little bit, I know what was shared at those meetings, but there's information shared that's relevant to people in the community and what they can do and also what types of crimes they should be aware of.
Yeah, so we, our crime analyst prepares data specific to that neighborhood or that BEET. Our commander that's in charge of that area goes, holds a BEET meeting and then provides an overview of what the trends are, what are the drivers of crime in this particular neighborhood, what are the vulnerabilities? And then equally as important, how can we target hardened? How can we, how can our community members make it much more difficult for somebody to commit a crime? I know crime is complex. There are so many reasons why people commit crimes. Some are out, sometimes it's out of desperation, but what we, our goal is to try to do is bring cohesiveness within the community. Know your neighbor. Know what resources are out there. What are things that we can do to work together when the police aren't here? Because the police can't be at every location at all times. How can we set up sort of a neighborhood watch-type system, sharing with each other different, they're able to share phone numbers and contact information? So it's really just, you know, bringing a community together, providing data, sharing what are the things that the Alameda Police Department is working on, and then asking the community, what do you want us to work on? What are the things that are important to you? It's an exchange of information so that we can make informed decisions on resource allocation and deployment. There was a comment that was made earlier about having police officers out. I failed to mention this earlier as well. We're standing up a bicycle patrol team, so our business districts will see much more of that as well. So we're super excited about that.
And to your point about the BEET meetings, I've been at meetings where the residents who attend have know the officer already. They ask what's going on since last you last reported on this or this issue. And with that, I also wanted you to comment on the CERT program, which is a great program in Alameda as well that we, that we, the CERT program, community.
That might be a little more fire-oriented, fire department-led.
Yeah, so it's, there's, we work closely with the fire department. They take lead on their CERT program, but we're definitely a support system with the fire department.
Well, thank you, Chief. And I, in closing, just want to really provide and encourage the continued addressing of crime. As you know, I've met, I often stop officers when I see them on the street and they're always completely professional, completely interested, completely ready to move on anything. And I also want to say that I'm very happy to know that patrol is up to speed, that our patrol office, our number of patrolmen is up to speed. And I think what I'm looking to see, and I know that a lot of my neighbors as well, is to see traffic enforcement continue because that's how we know what APD is doing and that's how we feel safer on the streets as well.
Absolutely. Thank you. We are definitely prioritizing traffic enforcement, looking to assign one, maybe two additional traffic enforcement officers to the traffic unit so to just to build that up.
Sure. And have those bicycle officers give tickets to people in the bike lanes when they park there.
We'll be alert.
Thank you. And I'll go last, and I mean, much of what I would have said has been said by my colleagues. But thank you, Chief Yoshi. I continue to be very impressed with you and your department and how it continues to evolve. And I'm really pleased to see the new recruits you've brought in, laterals, new recruits, the amazing diversity, language capability of our officers. I will share with the public that we were at the same event the other night. Asian Health Services was celebrating its 50th anniversary gala in Oakland, and the chief was there, and he was doing a little recruiting right there. I might have been assisting him a little bit. I don't know how that all turned out. But, and I did mention to you that I was recently in Sacramento for some meetings, and Sacramento patrol cars or their, you know, SUV vehicles on the back have a QR code and it says, want to work for Sacramento PD? So I said, I wish I had had a chance to take a picture, but I was always rushing from one location to another, but I think it might be a good addition to the back of our patrol vehicles. Anyway, thank you for what you're doing. I think, you know, it's clear, as you've described, that the crime, the different types are always evolving, that you need to be very flexible. And so this is also just a request of the public that when you see something happen, immediately contact the police department. Chief, you want to just do the differentiation between when you'd call 911 and when you'd call the non-emergency number?
Yeah, so 911 is for an in-progress emergency where people are at risk immediately. Their safety is immediately at risk. The non-emergency number is to report things that maybe there's not, there's not an immediate risk at the time. Maybe, you know, your car's been broken into or there's vandalism has occurred, things like that. We want to hear about all those things because, again, as I mentioned earlier, we can't be in all places at all times, but we still want to get there as soon as possible because we can collect valuable information, valuable evidence to help figure out who did it and how we can bring resolution to a victim of a crime. So our non-emergency number is anything other than something's happening right now where a human being's safety is at risk.
Thank you for that. And so just along those lines, be sure to contact APD, as Chief said, either the non-emergency number or 911. Don't go to social media first. Don't post it on, you know, Next or Alameda Peeps. APD needs that information, that crime data, so that it will help them focus their enforcement efforts going forward. So thank you so much for that. Thank you for all you do.
Thank you all.
All right. Thank you. All right. So that was information on the item, and now we're going to go on to item 7C. And Madam Clerk, would you introduce that item, please?
Work session on the urban forest plan and implementation.
All right. And I believe that this is also one that might need a little extra time. Is someone going to present on this or?
Yes.
Who?
Very good point.
Okay.
We will, we've got our director, Alan Ty, and then Danielle Mueller.
All right.
Here they are. They were all.
They've just been moving at such a breakneck speed. You weren't, all weren't ready. Okay. Just going to grab a water, but come on up and introduce. Actually, before you even start, Ms. Accord, and you can introduce yourself. Counsel, let's have another motion to extend this speaker time for the staff presentation from 10 to 20 minutes. Is that what you would like? Don't go too far. Would 20 minutes be good for your presentation time? Okay. Do you have a motion?
Somewhere.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Jensen, seconded by Vice Mayor Pryor.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Pryor. All those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that passes. We've got 20 minutes. Welcome whomever.
My name is Danielle Mueller. I'm Sustainability and Resilience Manager, and I'm pleased to be with you tonight for a work session to hear your input on the public review draft of the Urban Forest Plan. Next slide, please. This was a team effort to get here, and I'm joined tonight both remotely and in person by Justin Long, Parks and Rec Director, Aaron Smith, Public Works Director, Liza Cord, Public Works Coordinator, Tim Haines, AMP General Manager, our technical consultant, Ryan Allen, and AIM Consulting, who did an excellent job supporting us on the public engagement component of the process. Next slide. The purpose of the Urban Forest Plan is to update the master street tree plan to include park trees and promote an increase in overall tree canopy, to develop a forward-looking plan and policies based on the needs of the city, to develop the resources necessary to effectively manage the urban forest and implement the plan, and to partner with our community to effectively steward the forest. Next slide. We're all aware the many benefits of trees, including shade, reducing energy needs for cooling buildings, capturing and slowing rainwater runoff, fresh food and habitat for animals, making our community healthier and providing cleaner air, and beautifying our streets and promoting civic pride and community identity. Next slide. So the process began back in 2023. We had a really amazing working group that supported us throughout the plan process. Members of the community who are experts in tree-related issues met five times during the process. We had an online survey with over 700 community responses. We had a couple of pop-up workshops at Bohol Circle Park opening, at the Storytelling and Drum Festival, and at the Spring Shindig. We did a student letter-writing activity where students wrote letters to the mayor and city council members and drew pictures and talked about what they loved about trees and why trees were important to them and their community. We had an urban forest listening session. And then last month, in this month, we have been to board and commission meetings. We've had community workshops, and now we're here at City Council. Next slide. So this is just showing the boards and commissions we went to, the two public workshops we had last week. The study session today will be at Historic Advisory Board on Thursday, Recreation and Parks next week. And then the plan is available for public comment until February 14th. You can see the website there for the members of the public to review and comment on the draft plan using the feedback form by February 14th. Next slide. The structure of the plan is, there's two volumes. The first volume is the strategic plan that talks about the purpose, did an analysis of Alameda's existing urban forest and our current management practices. It looked at towards the future, planning and actions for the future, and then talked about the process for developing the plan and community engagement and how we're going to keep the plan current over time. The second volume is more technical and includes the standards, details, guidelines, policies for how the city will manage the tree inventory and the urban forest. Next slide. So the vision for the plan was developed with extensive engagement with our working group and the community through the survey, pop-ups, and the Urban Forest Summit. And the vision that was developed was, is Alameda's urban forest is a collection of healthy, diverse, resilient trees, supported by sustainable resources and management practices that enhance our quality of life, provide habitat for wildlife, and support adaptation to climate change for the benefit of all community members and generations to come. We also, through that process, developed goals for the plan. We have four main goals, two shown here, to maintain and grow a healthy and diverse urban forest, to provide increase in tree canopy cover in each census tract and citywide by 2055, and then to develop the financial and human resources to effectively manage and steward the urban forest and implement the plan. We show a commitment, city commitment to go along with those goals, and then the plan includes strategies and actions to implement the goals. The remaining two goals are increasing public protection for public, increasing protection for public and private trees, and partnering with an engaged and informed community to effectively steward the urban forest. Next slide. Our consultants at DUDAC developed a canopy cover analysis as part of their analysis assessment of our current urban forest. They found that 11.2 percent of the city's land is covered with trees. The, it's, if you look at it from above, you can, the part of the land that's covered with trees, that the leaves and branches of trees is 11.2 percent of the city, city average, citywide, ranges from 5.1 to 21 percent by census tract. DUDAC also developed a priority planting score that considers current canopy cover, distribution of land use, number of city-managed vacant tree sites, pollution burden and equity, population and acreage. And you can see here, a higher priority planting score indicates a higher priority for focused tree planting efforts. Next slide. Part of, as part of the process, we also updated the city's tree species list. This is for use by Public Works and Rec and Park to guide their tree planting efforts and identify species that are appropriate for Alameda's current and future climate. It includes a lot of detail about information to assist city staff in selecting the right tree for the right place and considers species that are appropriate for planting under power lines as well. We provided, we took the list that's in the plan and put it up on this Cal Poly Select Tree website. It's a really nice way to get a more visual look at the trees. You can click on them and see the pictures and learn more about the characteristics of the trees. Next slide. As part of the plan, a 20 percent goal, 20 percent canopy cover goal was derived from the Climate Action and Resiliency Plan target of planting 350 trees per year over 30 years would result in a 20 percent canopy cover. This assessment, an assessment done by our consultants also indicated that 20 percent for a built-out city such as ours is typical and was considered realistic to achieve in the 30-year timeframe. Reaching 20 percent requires planting about 9,600 new trees. We have 4,200 vacant sites in the city's inventory, so about half of those needed trees would occur on private property. And you can see in the graph here that achieving 20 percent would also require preservation of existing trees and growing the trees that are already there, and then opportunities for public trees and commercial public institutions and residential private planting to get us to the full 20 percent. So partnership will be very critical. And ultimately, City Council will set the goal by providing direction on funding levels. Next slide. So our goal is to phase the funding over time in order to accomplish all of the funding phases here. We developed some different scenarios to identify the needs. We have, the current funding allows the city to meet some of our key performance metrics, but in order to achieve the full implementation of the plan, additional funding would be necessary. And again, we're looking for council direction on a phased process to achieve those goals. So we have, as we've been through the public comment period so far, we've been hearing from residents, many residents sending letters and providing comments on the comment forum. Some of the key comments that we've heard so far about maintaining or retaining the major streets and neighborhood tree recommendations, identifying opportunity sites for tree planting in parks and other open spaces, providing more flexibility to plant larger trees under the low-voltage power lines on iconic corridors, and considering undergrounding plans for power lines, adding or removing specific species from list, focus, more focus on natives, providing a procedure for planting species not on the list that may be well-suited or that we would like to try in Alameda, providing additional funds to remove pavement from tree wells in census tracts where there's high priority planting scores, and increasing tree protection measures and ensuring adequate replacement ratios when trees are removed, and accelerating our tree planting and considering a more aggressive canopy cover goal. Those are some of the comments that we've heard. So with that, tonight is an opportunity for you to provide feedback to staff on the draft plan, including the specific items that are shown here. I wanted to give a shout-out to Ayla Vasali, who's the Sustainability Intern in our division, and she was part of a volunteer tree planting effort with Parks and Rec at Main Street Linear where they planted 56 trees just a few weeks ago. And so we're really grateful for their effort in that project. So thank you very much. I look forward to your questions.
Thank you so much, Ms. Mueller. Counsel, do we have clarifying questions on this item? Councilmember Jensen?
I just have one clarifying question. What's the average cost, if you know, to remove a pavement from a tree well?
Hi, I'm hoping that there is somebody on Public Works that might be able to answer that question.
Is Director Smith on somewhere in the cloud there? Can we?
We can answer it later if you choose.
She probably has some ideas if we pull up.
Can you promote her, Madam Clerk?
Yeah. And we can put her up on the screen, please, Jane.
Yeah. Can do this.
Didn't mean to ask.
No, no, but she, she knows.
She knows that sort of thing off the top of her head, I'm sure.
Director Smith, is your Zoom up to date? I can't promote you to be a panelist. Oh, no, we haven't had this problem in a while.
Haven't done that.
Mayor, may I suggest?
It's working now. It's working now. Hold on.
It's working now. Hold on. Wait.
Well, why don't we, okay.
The next question, I'll see if I can.
Took the words out of my, out of my mouth. So we'll hold that thought, and as soon as we get Director Smith up and running or on the screen, we'll answer that. Any other clarifying questions? Okay, Council, yeah, Vice Mayor. No, we'll start from below. Go ahead.
I have a couple of questions. This one might be related, or it's two questions, but I think they're similar. I was wondering how neighborhoods are being prioritized? Like, are we, and then also, a concern that was brought up to me, so this is my question, is, is there going to be any uniformity or theme, like if you concentrate on a neighborhood or, you know, a street? Is it going to be like a hodgepodge of trees that are, you know, included in the matrix or where, you know? And I guess my example is all the trees on Central Avenue. So is there going to be a theme like that when creating that canopy?
Who would like to take that? Don't all rush up to the microphone at once, but someone, please rush up to the microphone.
Thank you. So the priority planting score is intended to help guide city resources towards planting in those neighborhoods with the lowest canopy cover and the highest need. So that's one of the tools that, that we would use in deciding where to plant trees. And I think you're referring to the, to the appendix or the chapter in the Master Street Tree Plan that talked about kind of neighborhood and corridor planting recommendations. And that is, it's correct, it was not retained in the current draft of the, of the Street Tree Plan. We wanted to focus on, and I'm hoping that our DUDAC consultant will also be able to be promoted to, to continue this answer for me, but to be able to, to be able to identify the right tree for the right place and to use all of the selection criteria that are provided in the tree matrix to make a decision about the best place to plant a tree in that neighborhood, and to be able to consider species diversity at the, at the block level and at the city level. So I don't know if Ryan is available to.
This is just an announcement to any of our people there waiting to speak, to make sure you're on the most recent version of Zoom. And so that would be Ryan Allen is the DUDAC consultant. Welcome, Mr. Allen. Can you answer that question?
Yeah, I, I think Danielle actually did a pretty good job of it. But what's provided in the UFP and the appendices are, you know, guidelines for determining species for different locations to make sure that we're limiting the potential for infrastructure conflicts, we're promoting public safety, the long-term health of the trees, and trying to avoid tree removals. So the individual trees that would be selected for locations would be determined by city staff, and I believe, you know, they would want to keep continuity as much as possible within certain locations, but at times, new species might be required for a street if the old one is just not the right tree for it, whether it be too big or a species that is declining and not expected to be viable given climate change impacts.
Mary.
Can I answer your question?
Yeah, thank you.
All right. Let's go to City Manager, Assistant City Manager, Waldridge. Do you have a question or information?
I have an answer.
An answer.
For Councilmember Jensen.
Even better than questions.
Sorry, Director Smith's internet crash. She is back online if we have further questions for her.
Oh, so we could bring her up?
But I do have an answer to the tree well question. It's approximately $500 per, for, per tree well to remove the concrete.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Was there anything else we wanted to hear from Ms. Smith about Director Smith?
I don't think so.
No? Okay. Councilmember Bowler.
I just wanted to follow up on Vice Mayor Pryor's question in terms of, it sounds like it is a goal then, that continuity, that sense of continuity that we just heard about, because deviating from the prior plan due to concerns about, you know, which species is going to perform the best and those infrastructure things is a, is an important consideration, but also, it's not necessarily, as I understand it, mutually exclusive, right, to the, creating that character and continuity in certain neighborhoods, because that's one of the things that makes some of Alameda's neighborhoods so distinctive, right, just seeing the impressive trees. So is, could, could staff or the consultant comment on that? Do they, do they think that the input from the community is such that maybe we should alter this a little bit and kind of create that at least as a prominent goal, rather than just simply abandoning it?
Mayor?
Yes, Assistant City Manager, Waldridge.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Bowler and Vice Mayor Pryor. In regards to this concept, this is what we're here for tonight, is to take feedback, both from the community and from, from council. And so we'll absolutely take this feedback. It sounds like it's an important theme of maintaining that, the character of some of the iconic corridors. And so that's something that we're there, we, we have some strategies that we've been discussing, and that's certainly something that we can take and incorporate, because this will come before, back to you as a final plan for approval. And so we're, this is great input for us.
Great.
Just another question, too. I noticed, I noticed also on the, the slide that talked about community feedback, there was talk about more flexibility to plant larger trees under low-voltage power lines and on iconic corridors, and considering undergrounding plans. It's, it's really, it's really in line with the last question. I just wanted to see if staff could comment on that. I know we also got some correspondence with our power company about this, too. So that would be important to hear.
Do you want our, we can explain, I think we're, we are open to exploring.
City Manager, why don't you go ahead and answer that?
We have our general manager from Alameda Municipal Power here, so we'd like him to talk a little about why this is a safety issue. I think it is something still that if you'd like us to explore further, we could look at whether or not allowing some taller trees on certain corridors, but it would be something we'd want to look at carefully because of some of the safety issues, but would you like the?
Actually, I would love to call Tim Haines, General Manager of Alameda Municipal Power, if you would, to answer the question my colleague just asked, because I, when I heard the, the comments or saw it on the slides, that to allow that flexibility, I mean, we have just, we're just weeks away from the devastating fires in Southern California. And so I think safety, I mean, I'm all for trees and aesthetics, but I think safety also has to be first. So can you help us understand where that balance lies?
Mayor, is, is the microphone on?
Yeah, you might want to just be bringing it a little closer to you.
Mayor Ashcraft, Vice Mayor Pryor, and City Council members, Tim Haines, the General Manager for Alameda Municipal Power. I also want to point out that I, in 2023, was appointed by Governor Newsom to the California Wildfire Safety Advisory Board. I bring that up not because I'm here representing them or that board, but because I have a broader perspective on some of the issues that may be germane for what it is that we would be talking about. I have also brought Assistant General Manager Andre Bosler with me. He's my subject matter expert, and so if I'm left hanging here, he's going to sweep in, and he's going to be able to answer more completely than what I can. First off, Alameda is in the lowest fire-risk district in the state of California. And so we all need to recognize that, and we need to be able to make sure that our customer owners appreciate the fact that what devastation is taking place in Southern California is something that we're cognizant of, and we're mindful of, and doing what we can to make sure it's not repeated here. The risk is extremely low for something of that magnitude to occur in Alameda. Now, having said that, Alameda Municipal Power, as other utilities in California, has a mandate to ensure the safety and the reliability of the power supply that we provide to our customer owners. And we accomplish that through a combination of measures. There are, there are guidelines that are provided to us by the Public Utility Commission. We have best practices that have been established throughout the utility industry that guide the decisions that we make in regard to how we conduct our tree maintenance programs. And we rely on the experience and the judgment of, of our employees. What we're dealing with in Alameda is that what we need, what we need to be able to do is avoid trees in contact with our power lines. And so the steps that we take in order to be able to, to avoid that is that we will, you know, we've increased our inspections that we have of our power lines, we've increased the frequency with which we conduct our tree trimming, we have gone, and, and, and in effect, what's happened is that our budget has increased substantially in response to the measures that we've taken. This is not unique to Alameda Municipal Power. This is statewide. And so it's to be expected as we place greater and greater attention on ensuring that our equipment is, is safe and reliable for our customers. Our recommendation is that, and accordance with best practices, is that if you're planting a new tree underneath a power line, ensure that the tree will not exceed a maximum height of 25 feet in its maturity. And we feel as though, when that step is taken, the outcome is going to lead to a more reliable and cost-effective power supply, and it will lead to healthier trees that are underneath the power lines. And so that's the basis of how it is that we look at an issue like this, and the reasons that we come to, in turn, then, support the recommendation that, that is included in the, this current draft of the urban forest plan. Now, as the City Manager, Assistant City Manager have mentioned, we're open to try and figure out, I mean, this is a policy call. And so if, if you decide that there are steps that, if you decide that these iconic boulevards are something that merit consideration, we will adjust accordingly, and we will, we will bring to bear the practices that are, that we're mandated to do in order to be able to make sure that our customer owners are safe. So maybe that's a long answer to a pretty straightforward question, but.
Thank you for that. I'm just going to add some information. I just finished writing my monthly newspaper article, which will publish this week in various places, and it was basically an interview with Fire Chief Nick Looby. And of course, as we may all know, we've had eight members of Alameda Fire Department down in the Southland, some fighting the Palisades Fire and others, the Eaton Fire in Altadena. And Chief said what you said about we are a low-risk fire district, but with climate change and changing climate patterns, also comes things like stronger winds, and so that there is an opportunity for a wind-driven, spark-generated fire. So anyway, it's something, this is just clarifying questions right now when we get into discussion, and certainly, you know, this is just informational tonight, I believe. I'm always going to take the position that safety comes first, and we can figure out the aesthetics, but, you know, things change, and things are changing, including the climate, and so just something to be, to keep in mind. But thank you for all that good information. Councilmember Bowler, did that, and I answer your questions?
Yes.
All right. Okay. Councilmember Desa, clarifying question.
Great, well, thank you. You know, we got this great letter from a local resident named Christopher Buckley. In on the matter of the 25-foot limit to trees, one of the things he pointed out, and if we could have staff comment on, was the fact that the California Public Utilities Commission, the CPUC, has a certain order that seems to allow for trees higher than 25 feet in areas close to what are called secondary electrical lines. Maybe I'm getting my tech terms, technically, my terms wrong. So around high-voltage lines, maybe you don't want 25-feet-plus trees, but it sounds like the CPUC allows for 25-feet-plus lines in areas that are what are called secondary electrical lines. Maybe I'm saying that wrong. So if we can get a comment on that, is that correct? Is that the CPUC's guidance, General Order 95?
General, General Order 95 is, in fact, the guidelines that are provided by the Public Utility Commission that set the standards for our tree trimming practices. They're general in nature. And so what they do is they allow us to be able to have a better, have an understanding as to, in most cases, what you need to be able to do is establish a three-foot or a four-foot clearance from your secondary lines with, with the, with the trees. But there's a recognition in the, in the standards that judgment has to be applied in order to be able to effectuate the guidelines. And so that's what, that's what we do when, when we're looking at, you know, what is going, we'll do this on a tree-by-tree basis. And so we will go and we will look at the circumstances, and we will take into consideration the tree that we're trimming, the power line that it is close to, the, the growth that might occur between the time that we trim it and when it is that we could get back and trim it again. And so factors like that are taken into consideration, and they, and they're not necessarily captured in the guidelines that are provided by the Public Utility Commission. We, you have to draw on your expertise and exercise your judgment in order to be able to come up with a plan that works for your community.
Thank you. Anything further, Mr. Desa? Councilmember Desa?
Yeah, another question, maybe for another staff. So did the case-by-case approach that we seem to be utilizing, I think the framework is right tree, right place, something like that. But in a way, doesn't the, and again, you know, Christopher Buckley was very helpful in this, in the letter that he put together, doesn't the 2010 Master's Tree, Master Street Tree Plan kind of have a right tree, right place approach in terms of what's right for a neighborhood or what's right for, for major streets? So isn't that already in place?
I'm making eye contact with Ms. Mueller.
I can maybe start the answer to that question, but I think this is a different approach that we're taking to get to right street, right tree, right place. I think there's, if, if we get direction from council, as we mentioned, to go back and look, relook at those, those corridors and those neighborhood distinctions, I think that's something that we can, that we can look at.
Thank you.
Can you distinguish the different approach you're taking from the one that was laid out in the 2010?
Sure. In the Master Street Tree Plan, there's a chapter that highlights tree recommendations for major corridors and for specific neighborhoods in Alameda. So it's, it's quite extensive and covering pretty much all of the neighborhoods and major corridors. It looks at what trees are there currently and then recommends a, kind of a palette of, I think, five to six trees that would be suggested for planting within those corridors or neighborhoods. The approach that we've taken in this plan is to provide the overall tree matrix, tree species matrix, that provides a list of all the trees that would be suitable for planting in Alameda's climate, and, and then provides a whole list of many columns of different characteristics so that you can look at whether that tree is suitable for the, the width of planting that's available, how high it gets, does it drop leaves, what kind of leaves does it have, is it deciduous or evergreen, all these different kinds of characteristics, does it do well in, in high groundwater? So we have a really extensive kind of characteristics that, for each of those recommended tree species. species that would allow the arborist to select the right tree for that particular location.
Thank you.
But it's more of a citywide approach.
Yeah, thank you. Councilmember Desa, anything further?
No, thank you. Appreciate it.
Any other further clarifying questions? Okay, before we go to our public comment, we have exceeded our two hours of meetings, and I always take a break after two hours 'cause we just need to get up and stretch a little bit. So, it is 9:25. Let's be back at, can we be back at 9:40? Fifteen-minute break? Okay. If you're back here sooner, we'll start sooner. But, okay, back at 9:40, 9:40. Thank you.
Oh my gosh. Okay, let's call this meeting back to order. Madam Clerk, do we have public comment on this item?
We do.
All right, let's have our public comment.
Okay, we have three in person, but then a bunch remote, so I'll get two minutes each. The first is Amos White.
All right, welcome Speaker White. Amos White, that's you? It's getting late, right? The microphone wasn't on?
Oh, okay, sorry. That was my bad. I apologize.
I didn't mean to startle you there.
Hi, good evening. My name's Amos White again. In addition to being an Alameda resident, I also lead One Hundred K Trees for Humanity, an urban reforestation nonprofit. We plant trees here in Alameda and in the Greater Bay Area for climate, for equity, and for public health. I also serve on the Alameda County Agricultural Advisory Committee where I serve as Ag, Urban Ag Chair, and on CalFire's Urban, Urban and Community Forestry Advisor Committee. I'm here to speak in favor of the work and to support the work in this plan as a draft that staff has done. It's been two long years, so I commend you and your consultants in bringing this forward. In particular, I do want to amplify the call that Councilmember Desog pointed to of Chris Buckley's letter and words calling for taller shade trees and for increasing city protections on more species other than just the coast live oak. To your point, Councilmember Pryor, it's in terms of character and nature of what kind of trees down the streets, a monoculture of trees isn't in our best interest, like Encinal has. A biodiversity, greater biodiversity is, especially with the changing risks that climate brings. The Urban Forest Master Plan is only going to be as good as the yearly goals that are met by the city and not just stated in the plan or reports. And the public will be looking to hold the city accountable to that. So, two specific requests: we need more taller trees, street trees, and particularly those that exceed the draft's 25-foot shade tree height. And two, if you still hear, yes, from AMP and to your point, Councilmember Bowler, the City of Carmel by the sea specifically identifies that it has giant monorace that it prizes directly underneath their trees. So there are options.
Your time is up. Our next speaker is?
Gabriel Duncan.
Gabriel Duncan is our next speaker. Welcome back, Speaker Duncan.
Hi there. My name is Gabriel Duncan, and I just wanted to continue that we have a lot of really tall trees, like our redwood trees, which need to be protected. There are many other species of trees that we need to make sure that we keep here in the ground. And there are more appropriate trees that we should be planting and not so much worried about continuity and how our streets look, specifically because ambers are not the best tree that we should be picking. They're not even native. So there's no reason why we need to have streets lined with trees that aren't even from here. And then also, in the introduction of the plan here, page 25, it says that Alameda is the homeland of the Confederate villages of Lijian. As the corporate chairperson of the Confederate villages of the Lijian Inc., I'd like to inform you that this is the actual homeland of the Muekwa Loaning Tribe and that we'd like to see that changed. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker.
Former Councilmember Trish Spencer.
Welcome, Speaker Spencer.
Thank you, City Clerk. Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. I wanted to speak, first of all, I also want to say I'm a former mayor of the city. I wanted to speak to this item because the equity issue is raised in the report as the first point. However, then when I'm listening and when I'm looking at the pictures, the pictures throughout the plan all have lots and lots of trees. That is not reflective of streets in Alameda. It is actually reflective of, I think, the goal to have so many trees on our streets. And I heard comments in regards to our iconic corridors, our iconic boulevards, Central Avenue. That is, in fact, where the trees have historically been planted and supported in Alameda. While I was mayor, we had a tour down Webster where it was made very clear we did not have as many trees on Webster as we did on Park Street. However, as was discussed in the plan, to do the ball bouts on Park, trees were removed, new trees were planted, haven't been successful, and that is also now a problem, Park Street and Webster. But those areas need to be addressed. But to me, this issue of equity, so that we actually have, and there is some good work in the plan that shows the tracks of where there's less than 5%, and sadly, coincidentally, there's also a chart in regards to where the African-American and Hispanic populations are, and there's a correlation in between where the highest percentage is of people of color and where the fewest trees are. So I'm hopeful that we will look at not just our iconic streets and corridors and boulevards, but our entire community and focus on this equity issue that you hear so much about. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker.
Is remote, Dolores Kelleher.
Welcome, Speaker Kelleher.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'm a longtime Alameda homeowner and have long advocated for renewed attention to maintenance and restoration of our many trees. So it's gratifying to see this finally coming to fruition. They're not only beautiful, but I understand that there is an increasing importance in preserving and enhancing the trees to enhance the ecology of the local environment and to mitigate against some of the impacts of climate change. I want to believe this can be done and still preserve, you know, our unique tree structures. I went to the planning board workshop and was impressed with the detail and the rigor of the presentation. It was quite nice, and I enjoyed seeing it again. I also thought there were many good comments of the board and community speakers, especially Chris Buckley, whose knowledge, including the earlier tree plan, informs much of the detailed comments and recommendations. He gives a very valuable perspective. I heartily support his submitted letter and suggest you really read it thoroughly. Here are some key recommendations from that. To retain the 2010 Alameda Master Tree Plan's species designation for major streets and neighborhoods, and retain the master plan limitation for that 25-foot standard to only the high voltage lines and to non-major streets to allow for some of the larger, tight trees with more canopy. Identify long-term strategies for overhead utility line modification to minimize conflicts and make longer-term strategies for that. Make clarifications on the species matrix and further develop protected tree ordinance to more adequately address private property. I also think it's important to have a very experienced arborist as your manager going forward.
Thank you. Your time is up. Our next speaker.
Chase Martin.
Welcome, Speaker Martin.
Good evening. My name is Chase Martin, and I'm an environmental advocate. And I'm here today, although I appreciate the work that's been done, I'm afraid I'm disappointed. This draft urban forest plan does not expand current tree protections to safeguard Alameda's urban canopy on private property. Instead, there are several unnecessary and even harmful new policies, changing or limiting how trees are planted here on public lands. And I think this is a lost opportunity. These established trees offer mature beauty, deeper shade, and rich wildlife habitat, but also achieve a level of carbon sequestration that smaller, newer trees can only dream of. And so these established trees on private land warrant our protection. If the city hires a consultant to research a new policy and/or create a new ordinance, they should be directed to include protection of private property trees. This urban forest plan being discussed right now should commit in writing to both protecting private property trees and finishing the ordinance in a few years. Furthermore, the city should retain species designations for major streets and neighborhoods. The planning of particular species for certain streets, neighborhoods provide a unifying character to Alameda's neighborhoods and iconic thoroughfares. And the strategy was pragmatic. These trees were chosen because they're well suited to their intended settings. Also, I've noticed that certain species have been removed from the city's suggested tree list, and some of these are targeted without good cause, and this needs to be reevaluated. Finally, I'm opposed to expanding limited, limiting street trees to 25 feet to avoid more power lines as proposed, because there's just no evidence that it's necessary where secondary power lines are located. Finally, I just wanted to repeat that I'm really thankful that this work is being done and want to encourage the expansion of protection for privately located trees. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker.
Burkite Evans.
Welcome, Speaker Evans.
Hi.
Hi.
The recommended, the recommendations in the Urban Forest Plan for nursery selection, tree planting, establishment care, formative pruning, and mature tree pruning are very good, and if followed, they should result in healthy, well-shaped trees with a potential to live long lives and provide a number of ecosystem services to the community, including shading and cooling our streets, fixing carbon, and slowing stormwater runoff. This will require additional and ongoing work by the city to achieve. Someone will need to know how to select healthy nursery stock, to plant it, to not select trees with girdling roots, and to water regularly. I want to encourage the City Council to fully fund the amount requested by the team to enable full implementation of the Urban Forest Plan, including hiring Urban Forest Manager. Without someone with both expertise and authority, it will be difficult to up our game. The Species Selection Guide contains many interesting trees from all over the world. However, it does not, we have four native trees, the coast live oak, the redwood, the red willow, and the arroyo willow, and the latter two are not included in the species plan. According to Calscape, the arroyo willow supports bats, birds, bees, and the caterpillars of as many as 200 species of butterflies and moths, and neither of them are in the Tree Species Selection Guide, and they should be added. In addition, the coast live oak should not be limited to a small percentage of the trees planted in Alameda. According to Alameda historian Woody Minor, Alameda was once a "national park quality oak woodland." Finally, I want to say that if you are undergrounding wires, you don't have to have small trees beneath them.
Thank you, and your time is up. Our next speaker.
Alex Spear.
Welcome, Speaker Spear.
Good evening. You can hear me?
Yes.
Excellent. So historically, everything south of Jean Sweeney Park was oak woodland. Unfortunately, coast live oaks are really, they're very large street tree, they're very large trees, and they don't make for good street trees. But we should plant them. They should be in our parks. They should be wherever we have room to put a giant tree, because they're grand fun. They're messy. They drop lots of leaves. They drop acorns. They drop sticks. My kid loves to play under it, okay? They have high play value. And so I would like to encourage them, and they're native, they support 150 different species of butterfly and moth, which all feed birds. Baby birds require something like 900 caterpillars to, before they fledge. So I live on a protected tree street, and I think there should be something in the plan for what you do if all the trees on that street suddenly have to be replaced. What happens when they're end of life? What do you do? Who pays for it? I mean, can you replace, you know, the London Plains with something else? And, you know, it, still, the historic character, does it matter if it's that particular tree? Does it just have to look a little bit, you know, is it just that it's all the same? What matters there? Also, I think you should underground any power lines on our protected tree streets. And don't be like, oh, well, let's put taller trees under power, no, 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 don't bother. And we should focus on current tree survival. People are putting concrete right up to the tree trunk, and killing the tree is easy, and people don't realize that. And I see a lot of that around here. And it's probably not legal, but it's happening, you know, kill the tree. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker.
Betsy Matheson.
Welcome, Speaker Matheson.
Good evening. Walking and biking in Alameda on hot days, I feel striking temperature differences from one place to another. Streets with tall trees that shade the black asphalt pavement are relatively cool. Streets with short trees or no trees have no shade and are uncomfortably hot. Alameda's 2040 general plan includes land use and city design provisions to promote walking and biking. Some residents and visitors must walk or bike because they don't have access to a car. So having shaded streets is an equity issue. It should be a city priority to preserve tall trees and plant new trees that will grow tall to produce shade and keep people comfortable. This will help the city meet its active transportation goals and also reduce energy demands of buildings. The city's program of undergrounding utilities buys less time. Small trees that will become tall trees take time to grow, time during which the utility undergrounding can proceed, freeing up airspace for the future tall trees already growing below. I urge the city to incorporate the utility undergrounding schedule into the street tree planting schedule. Please don't limit tree heights where overhead wires, which will become obsolete, are currently in the way. In addition, I urge the city to update the tree preservation ordinance to protect all species of tall trees on private property as well as on published property. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker.
Christopher Buckley.
Welcome, Speaker Buckley.
Christopher Buckley, Alameda resident and member of the Urban Forest Plan Working Group. As mentioned, I sent a rather lengthy letter to you. I'm going to go over just a few points of it, starting with item 4G. Minimum planting area sizes for sidewalk trees in the 2010 Master Street Tree Plan matrix should be retained. The Urban Forest Plan Appendix C matrix has radically reduced, increased planting area sizes for many species that have performed well as street trees in three-foot and four-foot wide planting strips. For example, the planting area width for pin oak and silver linen are shown in the Urban Forest Plan matrix as greater than 10 feet compared to 3 feet in the Master Street Tree Plan. So the concern is implementation of the Urban Forest Plan planting area sizes will affect, will basically limit the selection of street trees to small species. So please retain the planting area sizes that are in the 2010 Master Street Tree Plan. Going over to item one, there's already been some discussion of this, advocating retaining the 2010 street tree plans designations for major streets and neighborhoods. These are ideas preserve the iconic character of major streets and create new iconic character. The matrix will need to be, the designations will need to be revised to reflect changes in the matrix. The matrix has deleted some of the species there. We'd like to have the consultant do that. We ask, I asked the City Council to ask staff to direct the consultant to retain the designations and then redo the, you know, the specific species as I mentioned. Finally, with regard to the utility lines, just correcting what General Manager Kane said, for General Order 95 for secondary, they don't call for 3- to 4-foot clearance. They call for no clearance, but you should not have strain or abrasion.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Madam Clerk.
That was our last speaker.
Okay, with that, we will close public comment on item 7C, and we will go to council comment. And again, this is, it's a work session. We're just providing input. Why don't we start on my left if anyone has anything they want to add? Councilwoman Johnson?
I think, I would just like to get a little more information about the schedule. As you mentioned, Madam Mayor, this is a work session. So what would be the next steps?
Ms. Neeler, want to come back up? Our go-to person this evening?
I can answer that. So we have a couple more boards and commissions to attend this week and next, and then we'll be, and the public comment is open until February 14th. So at that time, we'll be reviewing all of the comments we've received, your direction, and making revisions to the plan. We're looking at, depending on the extent of the revisions that are required, coming back ideally in late spring with a draft to City Council.
Have, would you say that, it appears tonight at least, that a lot of the comments have been about the, the size of the trees related to the 25-foot limit, which is clear? And I would ask, I know that you've presented to HAB, I believe, and the planning board?
HAB is coming later this week. We presented to PUB and planning boards.
Okay. Did you have any similar comments at those presentations?
We did, yeah.
Do you have any, can you comment on what the main public comments have been, or do you want to wait until the?
I think those were what was listed in the presentation on the slide.
Right, right. But I want it to be publicly stated.
Okay. So the primary comments that we've received so far and the themes have been about, as you heard, retaining the major corridor tree recommendations, identifying opportunity sites for planting in parks and other open spaces, especially for some of the larger trees, some more flexibility for trees under, for the larger trees under low voltage power lines on iconic corridors, and to consider AMP's undergrounding, utility undergrounding plans. We've gotten lots of comments about specific trees that either should be added or removed from the list. We've heard about focusing on natives and not just the natives that are in Alameda specifically, but some of the natives in our, in our region, and thinking about where, how we might add and adjust the species list over time. We've heard about council providing additional funds to remove pavement from paved-over-tree wells, especially in high-priority planting score census tracts. We've heard about Uh, we've heard about increasing tree protection measures and ensuring adequate replacement ratios. Um, and some folks who would like us to be more aggressive and plant more trees and achieve a higher canopy cover goal.
Thank you. And so when, um, this was presented to P, to AMP, to the AMP board, then, and, um, the General Manager is here as well, Mr. Kane, but was there any information provided about the potential cost? I don't know if, if the undergrounding was discussed, wide undergrounding or, or in, on, just on certain streets where, um, the tree cover tends to be more uniform?
Um, your question is?
It's regard, whether you discussed at, when this was discussed at the PUB Board, whether undergrounding. I know it's not part of this project, and I don't, we're not discussing it tonight, but I was just curious whether the PUB, or the AMP board had discussed it.
Uh, no, they did not. But grid hardening, including undergrounding, is, um, you know, one of the tools that are being brought to bear by utilities in order to be able to mitigate their wildfire risk. Um, what you find when you dig into it is that, um, that it's prohibitively expensive when compared to, um, just traditional vegetation management.
Thank you. Um, and then since you're there, can I also ask you, would you, do you have an idea? I know that, um, actually, I was watching one of the meetings, the virtual meeting, and I think the day before that, there had been some issue with, uh, an arborist and a tree line and a tree trimming. And I just wonder if you can comment on how does that happen often? And is it something that concerns you?
Um, you're putting me on the spot, but let me, let me give it a go. Um, so I think that the, the event that you were describing occurred Wednesday last week. And, um, the, uh, what we experienced is that in the middle of the day during routine, uh, tree trimming, our arborists noticed that, um, a tree on private property was aflame. And so we dispatched field crew to assess the situation, and they confirmed that, um, it was in fact an emergency and needed to be addressed. And so as we were able to bring our crews together, um, what we did was we reconducted the power system, shut down that circuit, and, um, and began the, um, the tree trimming. And it was, uh, more extensive than what had been envisioned, um, at the beginning. And so what was projected to be a, a three-hour tree trimming, um, uh, time ended to be, um, six hours. And so, um, I think one of the, one of the things that we've learned from this, I guess maybe step back a little bit. Um, we dispatched people to inform the residents that, um, this outage would be taking place. Um, we went door to door. We, um, we tweeted out, um, the, uh, the, uh, problem that we were dealing with. And, um, and so I think one of the lessons that we've learned is that, um, we need to be, uh, more proactive in, uh, in our customer outreach, but, um...
And you've also, but this must happen, not, not the power outage itself, but the, but the actual issue with tall trees and having to trim trees and having trees interfere with power lines and, um, having, I, I've been on, on the City Council for a couple of years, but I know that there's been at least two other incidents of trees interfering with power in Alameda. So I just, I'm just trying to bring this up because I, I'm not an arborist or a landscape architect, but, and I want to hear from you and defer to you as well as to staff with regard to the potential, um, issues or problems with planting very tall trees or with the, the tall trees that we currently have. And, um, I know that it's been discussed and brought up as well that we, there are primary lines and secondary lines, and the secondary lines are lower than the primary lines and perhaps less, um, concerning, less, less worrisome, um, with regard to having trees grow into them or over them. So that's another, um, issue that I think I, I just defer to you or to the City Manager as well.
And before, Mr. Haynes, before you might respond, I think City Manager Jennifer Ott would like to say something.
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to add, we do, it is a, it is a, we've had five and a half, on average, over the last 18 months, tree incidents and tree outages, um, or incidents per month. So it is something that does happen frequently and not to be taken lightly, but it is also something, if there are some very limited corridors, it's something we can go back and talk about and look at what those trade-offs would be in terms of cost, safety, and we can try to analyze that a little further.
May I, may I ask for just further clarification? So when you say 5.5 tree incidents a month, what does that encompass? Do you, back to you, Mr. Haynes?
These are, um, when there's, um, an automatic, uh, response by our, by our systems that are alerting us that we've got a, a problem with one of our power lines. Or, um, uh, another example is, um, a resident calling in. And so, um, that is, um, that reflects the incidents, um, that we're referring to with this tabulation.
And in the one that Councilmember Jensen, um, referenced, was that the one on, was it Marina Drive last week?
I don't remember the address.
I think it was Windsor.
Windsor, um...
And it was about 120 homes.
And what was it that happened? I didn't understand the terminology you used. Was, was there an actual fire or there was just?
Yeah.
There was a fire?
There was a fire.
Okay.
And so a tree had, a, a tree, over time, had grown up and around, uh, our power lines and ignited.
Okay, okay. Right. Um, did you want to add anything, City Manager? Okay, back to you, Councilmember, back to you, Councilmember Jensen.
Thank you, thank you, um, Mr. Kane, for your, I, I'll just, I'll just wrap it up. I, um, I appreciate the, the plan, the, the forest plan strategy. I wholeheartedly support the goals of 350 trees per year and an overall addition of 9,600 trees. That's a big goal, but I think that, um, with this, this plan and with the support of the community, we can, we can reach that goal. But we're also going to need some, um, incentives, some encouragement to help to remove the tree wells. I know that a lot of sites have been identified already, but removal of pavement from covered tree wells will certainly go a long way to, to be able to plant more trees. I also appreciate that the Urban Forest Plan has, um, strategy for to engage residents and community organizations. The participation and involvement that we've heard tonight, that I've heard at the public meetings, et cetera, see, definitely indicate, and they show that Alamedans care about trees. Alamedans believe that trees are critical to quality of life, as I do. Um, and here's one example, I'll close with why trees are so critical. Less than six months ago, and, um, I'm looking at, um, at our, at our, uh, Ms. Mueller, um, about less than six months ago, students at some Alameda schools were going out to recess on Blacktop where the temperatures were over 90 degrees. And the heat wave in October 2024 impacted some schools more than others, and those were the schools that aren't adjacent to parks. Those were schools like Edison Schools, Love School, Payden School, several schools in Alameda that don't have a park right next door. And so in response to the heat wave, AUSD outlined a strategy to address heat incidents. And one of the priorities, one of the main priorities of that strategy is to plant more trees at school sites. So I appreciate that we are working in partnership with our community, and I, um, will work with AUSD. And I know that, that staff will, and the, the, um, plan will work with, with AUSD and with all our community partners to, to reach the goal of 9,600 trees.
And Vice Mayor Pryor?
I just want to acknowledge all the hard work of staff, um, in fielding so many questions. Um, as Councilmember Jensen just alluded to, uh, we have a very, uh, robust, engaged community regarding the Urban Forest Plan. Um, and I just appreciate, uh, the thoughtfulness in response to the, the so many very valid and vast concerns. And I do have a, um, oh, and I also just want to say that I, I do like the priority, um, with regards to equity about, you know, going into the parts of the island where we have very low, um, a low amount of trees. Um, and I, I think somebody brought the point up of it's easier to bike and walk when there's a lot of trees and I, and yeah, I, I just thought that was an excellent point. Um, and I do have a question, though, about, just because I, I'm not a tree expert, but we, uh, are probably going to have even more, like, robust storms, rain and wind. Um, my question is how, so the new trees, um, that we'll be planting, are, are newer trees more susceptible to, um, damage as opposed to, uh, and, um, and if, I was just curious if this has been factored in? And, um, and then, of course, with a perfect storm, we have rain, we have wind and an earthquake. So I guess I'm just trying to, you know? Prepare, be prepared.
I'm seeing that we can bring our consultant back up to answer that question.
Sure, yes. Um, Mr. Allen, Ryan Allen, right?
Yeah, I'm going to put him up on the screen, too.
Logan, so the, the question is, uh, are younger trees, newer trees more susceptible to, to wind and storm damage than mature trees?
That was it, wasn't it, Vice Mayor?
Yep, that's, that was it.
Okay, uh, um, uh, yes and no.
That's a lawyer's answer.
Well, I say that because, you know, newly planted trees don't have root systems that are established yet. Um, and so it'll take, you know, two, three, four years before their roots are established and they don't need, don't need supportive stakes and ties to, uh, keep them, you know, in place more, more or less in the ground. Um, but once the roots are established, as far as the trees, uh, being susceptible to, to breaking, limb breakages or falling over, uh, that, that is usually a consideration of the type of tree. Some trees, um, have, when they're younger, um, have softer wood and are more susceptible to breaking, um, in wind events versus others. Um, and then really, more so when trees are mature, it's more about how they're being maintained, um, uh, being pruned, things like that. And then whole tree failure really can depend on a lot of factors. Um, but is more site-specific than tree-specific.
Um, yeah, so I guess what I'm imagining is, like, a lot, like, having extreme flooding and saturation. Um, so I guess that's where my, my concern is. So, uh, so when we're planting trees, I mean, there are going to be neighborhoods or, you know, certain streets that are just going to collect more water, just, you know, because we haven't done the infrastructure, for example. Um, so is that going to be taken into account when we're going?
Any, any tree in highly saturated soils, um, and in a wind event can be susceptible to failure. Um, so no matter how healthy or well-maintained it is, um, under the right conditions, it, it's susceptible to failure.
And that's it. Anything further? Okay.
Councilmember Bowler, anything further from you?
Just to say that I, I support, you know, staff's report with the, with the proviso that I think there's been some really good community feedback and really thoughtful. I mean, we've got some important goals. There's, there's four themes that are outlined in the staff report. I'll go over that. Those are, those are really important. Um, but there's also just a sense that, you know, we're concerned about, of course, the environment, we're concerned about the character of neighborhoods, we're concerned about cost. So I would just, um, encourage the, that there be some ability to keep the flexibility, but also hone in on specific neighborhoods or, or examples where there could be more, um, adherence to sort of the plan, the work that, the good work that was done years ago. I mean, we have a really strong plan that was put together in 2010, so I think it's important to take another, one more look at that and, and, uh, really appreciate all the hard work from everyone on this.
Thank you. And Councilmember Desoc?
Well, thank you. You know, I think one way to begin this discussion is just to reflect on, you know, the city of Alameda and, and the name and our identity. You know, at its core, Alameda means tree-lined streets. And the root of Alameda, thank you, Wikipedia, the root of Alameda is Alamo, which is poplar tree. So it's really a grove of poplar trees. And the poplar tree is on average 40 to 60 feet. So if we were to follow this, policy of limiting tree heights of new trees to 25 feet under all utility lines, we couldn't even do the trees after which our, the name of our city is based. So, you know, um, so that's really something to think about. Um, I think the members of the public, and I especially thank Christopher Buckley in putting, taking the time to do his research and put together his letter. I think the members of the public have raised interesting, um, points regarding, um, the 25-foot, um, tree limit, height limit, um, uh, under all utility lines. I mean, perhaps a case can be made that, that, that limit should apply only to high-voltage lines. Um, I, and I do think that, you know, certain streets in Alameda, um, deserve, uh, you know, uh, you know, are really emblematic of Alameda in, in the, in the, in the beautiful, um, heights of those trees. You know, every time when we do July 4th and we go down Central Avenue after we turn off of Grand Street, we all love, you know, going down, uh, Central Avenue because of the tree heights on both sides. Um, so I think there, there is something to be said on how certain, um, areas might continue to have, um, uh, trees of a particular height. Um, so I, I do appreciate, um, the plan that's being put together here. I do appreciate the way in which tree planting is being prioritized, the notion of equity. I think there is something to be said that, that maybe in certain neighborhoods, um, on average, we have less trees relative to other neighborhoods. So the fact that we're trying to correct this, I think, is, is a key feature of this. Um, but that has to do with tree planting and, and where it happens. Um, I think one of the outcomes of tonight in, in, in hearing what the public have to say is the type of trees and the height of trees. And I hope that, you know, we, um, take to heart and, and come back and figure out ways to, to figure out if there's a middle road. I think other points I'd like to raise is, um, so the tree planting I heard is something like $500 per tree planting. Maybe we need to think about, you know, um, private donations and people get recognition and, and council creates policies so that, um, people can contribute to some kind of tree fund, but, but council creates policies as to how the trees, uh, funds are spent so that, um, people aren't just, you know, buying trees in front of their own, in, in their own neighborhoods. So that's something to think about. Um, maybe for Alameda Point, maybe we use, um, base reuse revenues, uh, lease revenues or, or whatever, municipal service revenues that are generated out there to, to pay for tree planting at Alameda Point so that we can reserve more funding for, um, for Alameda west of Main Street. Um, so I think, um, that's, uh, um, I think that those are my, um, points for tonight and look forward to what comes back. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, and I'll go last. And, um, again, thank you to staff for bringing this forward and all the good information. Um, I love trees and love to see lots of trees around the city for all the reasons that have been, um, expressed. But we do need to be smart about where we plant them. And, um, I just cannot look the other way when I think about the fires that just raged in Southern California and also hearing that here in Alameda, we have 5.5 tree incidents per month, including the one that just happened, I think it was last week. And so I am all for undergrounding, and that's certainly in the city's plan as, you know, we're going through, um, neighborhood by neighborhood. Certainly all new construction would be, um, would have the utilities undergrounded. But I think that's a sequence. Let's get those utilities undergrounded and then plant the trees as high as you want. But I just think that we also have to be prudent that, um, it's, it's lovely to see tall trees, but it's not lovely to see fires raging through neighborhoods and destroying neighborhoods. Um, I want to just call out the efforts... I want to just call out the efforts of AUSD schools. I think there is, Danielle Miller, you're a part of it, is it the Green Schoolyard? What's the effort, the Green Schoolyard? Do you want to just come up and say a few words about this? Because I went to the workshop, was it last week, at Mastic Senior Center on the urban tree plan? And so I was learning a little bit. Just tell us a little bit about what this effort at AUSD.
Yeah, there's a new effort underway by some PTA members from across the district on a green schoolyards initiative. They were successful in securing a small PG&E grant recently to plant, I think, seven trees at Ruby Bridges. And they've been really learning a lot about the process for planting, working with the district and the facilities, staff there and are looking, they went out and did some assessments of all the school sites, I believe, in AUSD and looking at some of the opportunities for maybe some other kind of low, low hanging fruit for planting trees at other schools. So I think they, they're off to a great start.
Yeah, I, I really appreciated hearing that. So, and to Councilmember Desoc's point about maybe a private fund or private donations, earlier this year, no, I guess it was late last year, I did a proclamation for the, I think, 80th anniversary of Boy Scout Troop 89, which happens to be the troop that my son was, belonged to and is an Eagle Scout from. But one of the things that they did, I mean, long before he was in Scouts, was this troop planted trees at, down at what is now Crown Memorial Beach. And they were describing how it was just this sort of windswept area without vegetation. And these Boy Scouts did this, they, they did this, you could plant a tree, you could buy a tree from the Scouts, and then they worked with an arborist to plant them. And those trees are still growing. I think down at, I think at the base of, like where Portola, do you know where the triangle is and near, near the Lower Washington Park? But they, it was an amazing number of trees. And knowing Alamedans as I do, I think that they would definitely kick in for, for a good cause. And I agree with Councilmember Desoc, not to buy that tree for in front of your house, but just to, for that equity that we want to have this tree cover around the city. And that's why I loved what I'd heard at this workshop where there were parents from the Green Schoolyard program and telling about Ruby Bridges, because that is one of the, their kindergarten play yard has no shade whatsoever. And so that was good to hear. And then I did have one question for the city attorney. So Mr. Shen, there was a public speaker, I think remote, who talked about wanting us to do more protection of trees on private property. What issues, if any, does that raise for the city?
I think the council could probably do so through zoning. And so if that is something the council wishes to do.
Speaking to your microphone so I can hear you.
If the council wishes to do that through zoning, I'm sure staff will explore it further.
And what would that look like? What would we be looking at to?
Presumably.
Is Allen Ty, Planning, Building and Transportation Director, will you take Mr. Shen off the hook there?
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of the Council, Allen Ty, Planning, Building, Transportation Director. So a tree ordinance that would regulate private property could involve requiring permits for tree removals. It could require developers to provide a, to follow a tree replacement ratio. So if they're developing a lot and they're removing trees, then they will replace it from a, according to a set ratio, four to one, for example. And, and other requirements that could apply to tree trimming to ensure that best forestry practices are followed. So there's no tree topping, things of that nature. So there are a number of options that we can explore.
Okay. Thanks, thank you so much for that. Anything you wanted to add to that, Mr. Shen?
I do not.
Yeah?
I do not.
Oh, yeah. Okay, thank you. That was, that was really helpful. Anyway, yes, I look forward to having this item come back to us in the spring and go out there and do good things. Thank you. All right. So now we are going to move on to item 7D. Madam Clerk, would you introduce that item for us, please?
Introduction of ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute a lease amendment for building 360 at 1900 Skyhawk Street for a nine-month rent and free fee deferral and subsequent 12-month deferred rent payment schedule with Astra Space Operations LLC. This item requires four affirmative votes. In accordance with the California Environmental Quality Act, this action is categorically exempt from further environmental review pursuant to sequel guidelines, section 15301, existing facilities and 15061B3, common sense.
Would you like to introduce yourself?
Sure. Good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor and members of the city council. I'm Abby Thorne Lyman. I'm the Director of Base Reuse and Economic Development of the city. Ready for me to go?
Yeah, go for it.
Okay. So tonight we were discussing a possible lease amendment with Astra Space Incorporated for one of their buildings at Alameda Point. Astra conducts aerospace development, testing and manufacturing and related functions out of four properties in the Enterprise District area of Alameda Point. These are highlighted in yellow on the graphic to the right. These are building 360, building 397, as well as surrounding yard space that's demarcated on the map as 609. And as well, they have a license for a portion of Pier 3 where they store a boat known as the Maritol. Astra has been at Alameda Point since 2017 and has gradually expanded its footprint between 2017 and 2022 within building 360 until they occupied the building in its entirety in 2022 and the city entered into a five-year lease with them. This slide shows a summary of Astra's leased and licensed properties. I want to point out a couple of things about the data on this slide, which you may have noticed yourself. One is that building 360 is Astra's largest lease and it is in fact the city's largest single leased building in Alameda Point, in Alameda, I would say, at almost 180,000 square feet. It is a large building. And as a result, you can see that the monthly rent that Astra is paying is over $100,000 a month, $127,000 a month. You will also notice that Astra operates with month-to-month lease for building 397, which is just south of West Pacific Avenue. So building 360 is to the north of West Pacific and 397 is to the south. And you will notice that Astra is operating on multiple expired license agreements, which are, are running month-to-month. So in total, Astra is charged over $165,000 per month in rent and license fees. There's a couple of other really important things to know about the building 360 lease in particular. Astra has fulfilled several very unique environmental requirements within this building in order to occupy it. This building is actually on still Navy-owned property that the city operates through a lease in furtherance of conveyance. There is a groundwater plume of volatile organic compounds that, that is, runs underneath the building that you can see in the light blue on the graphic to the right. And as a result, the environmental regulatory agencies have required Astra, in order to occupy the building, to install a vapor intrusion, vapor intrusion barrier, various ventilation systems, and to conduct regular air quality testing to ensure the safety of their employees. So it is not without a, this is not a small operating expense that keeps Astra in that building. I also just want to point out that the city did provide a lease credit upon execution of the five-year lease. And there is a typo on the slide. It is, the lease credit is, is, provides rent abatement each month over the course of the entire five-year term of the, of the lease. There was a lot of community concern when Astra first came into Alameda regarding noise and vibrations from rocket engine testing. And so Astra does maintain limited hours for their engine testing as well. Astra does provide a, is an important economic contributor to the city of Alameda. They have 130 total employees, 100 of which are based out of Alameda. They also have a Sunnyvale facility. And we, we, there is the possibility, when Astra is profitable, of securing sales tax revenue and unsecured property tax. So in the fall of 2024, Astra approached the city requesting a partial deferral of its rent and fees for a period of nine months in order to help the company get through a brief period where they have, have limited capital. Astra went public in 2021 and in 2024, the company founders, Chris Kemp and Dr. Adam London, announced their intent to take the company private again. And they successfully did so by July of last year, but it came at quite an expense. And Astra is having a moment of reduced revenue and cash flow. So they are asking for the city's support in providing a rent abatement in order to help get them through this time while they seek sources of operating revenue. And one of the other commitments they have made is that they have a lease in Sunnyvale for their satellite engine facility that they would move that, that facility and its jobs up to Alameda when the lease expires in July of 2025. The city, city staff do support this rent abatement for a couple of reasons. One is Astra is the city's largest leaseholder. As you can imagine, releasing 180,000 square foot facility with significant environmental constraints is not going to be easy. Astra is bringing in jobs. It is an important economic driver. And if we can support Astra during this difficult time and help bridge them through until they are able to secure additional revenue, that could really have a lasting financial benefit to Alameda Point as well as economic benefit to the city. Okay, so the proposed lease amendment, you'll see it's for, I've, I've mentioned a number of properties. What we have done is consolidated a 50% rent abatement over a nine-month period from October 2024, retroactively, to June 2025. We have consolidated all of the, the rent abatement and the fee abatement for all of the leases and licenses into the building 360 lease. So you'll see it's just one lease amendment for building 360, which provides for the full amount of the abatement for all of those other agreements, and they would be obligated to repay through that building 360 lease. The reason we've structured it this way is if Astra fails to repay, they are defaulting on their largest property. So it, it, it helps kind of solidify the commitment. And frankly, it's just a lot easier paperwork than having to do five separate agreements with five different 50% abatements. So it just makes our lives easier. So you can see that what we have agreed to with Astra tentatively is to, to provide a 50% lease and license, license deferral for each month, which is currently about $83,000 per month. But Astra would continue to accrue late fees and interest. We would, they would retain the lease for building 360, but we would actually issue new licenses for building 397, the land around 397, as well as the land, the other land near their building that they, that they operate. Our goal is to relocate the Maritol and terminate the Pier 3 license. That's a little complicated legally, so we're working on it, but it's going to take, it's going to take time. So until such time as the Maritol is relocated, Astra would continue to pay the license fees for Pier 3. And then for, for the 12 months from July 2025 until June 2026, Astra would provide fixed repayment amounts of the deferred rent of $69,000 a month roughly. So staff recommend that council approve the first reading of the ordinance, amending the lease for building 360 to accommodate this, this rent deferral and the repayment plan. As I mentioned, if Astra failed to repay on building, on the, then they would default on their building 360 lease. We would administratively process new one-year licenses for all of the other properties. So that gives us that necessary amount of time to see what happens with Astra and see if they're able to climb out of this difficult period. And they would be obligated still to repay all of this over that, over that 12-month, 12-month period, plus their base rent and fees. And I would just add that we do have two representatives from Astra on the Zoom, Vice President of Manufacturing Bryson Gentile and Director of Communications Katie Clark, if you have any questions for them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thorne Lyman. Council, any clarifying questions?
Sure.
Do you have a question? Yeah, Councilmember Desoc.
Yeah, my clarifying question, and it's a question that I asked through email. So can you tell us a little bit about, let the public know about whether Astra has assigned or subleased any of its space, given how big the area is, to generate revenue?
Yeah, we've, we've not been made aware, nor have we observed any evidence of subleasing or assignment of their, of their lease rights.
Okay, great. Thank you.
And if it is Vice Mayor Pryor?
Well, I have two questions. How sure are we that the Sunnyvale move will happen?
There's nothing legally binding in the, the document stating that this must happen. I think it's a financially savvy move for them to consolidate their facility, but it's just something they've said verbally would occur. That's something you could ask them about as well.
Oh, okay.
Did you want to ask a representative? Can we get an Astra representative?
Yes.
Whomever.
Bryson is, I'm promoting Bryson Gentile.
Okay.
Good evening.
My name is Bryson Gentile. I lead operations in manufacturing here at Astra. I've been at the Alameda site since 2017, so pretty much the entire time. And I've also had the pleasure of hosting Mayor Ashcraft at our site. That was some months ago now.
The pleasure was mine. So we actually had two questions I'll call on you to answer, Mr. Gentile. My colleague, Councilmember Desoc, wonders, do you have anyone subleasing any of the premises? Does that have to do with security concerns? Why?
Yeah, no, we do not have anybody subleasing. We did look into the option of doing it because it's a large contiguous space and we are covered under international traffic and arms regulation. It's prohibitive for us to allow anybody else into the facility. And so we've basically not pursued that option for that reason.
Interesting. Thank you.
Thank you. And then, I don't know if you heard, my colleague, Vice Mayor Pryor, wanted to know how certain it is that the Sunnyvale facility lease will end this July.
We are very motivated to consolidate Alameda. It makes a lot of business sense for us. It's, it's a, you know, when we entered into the Sunnyvale lease, we intended to produce, you know, ran pretty quickly in manufacturing of our rocket in the Alameda facility. And there wasn't enough square footage for the projections of our satellite manufacturing. Since, since that point, I think a couple of things have changed. Most, you know, most majorly that we are not producing satellites anymore. We're producing satellite components. So the square footage required to do that is, is less large, yet we're still paying for the entire lease that we have in Sunnyvale. So we, we would like to get out of that one. And that lease ends in the middle of this year, as stated. We've already moved the vast majority of that facility and consolidated it to Alameda. So we're well underway. The remaining pieces of large equipment are in the process of being moved. So I expect we'll be out in June and completely consolidated into our Skyhawk building, is what we call it here in Alameda.
Okay. Did that answer your question?
Yep.
Thank you.
And then, oh, I just have one more question. And, and this is, I'm assuming, I, I'm assuming the answer, but I just don't want to ask it. Is there any other like potential lessee? Like if we don't agree to, I was going to say give the discount, but we don't agree to pause the total rent? Yeah.
Yeah, there's no other potential lessee waiting, waiting in the wings. And I think in this, in this market, what our brokers have stated is, you know, it's, almost everything has slowed. They're still seeing some success with leasing properties under 10,000 square feet. But yeah, leasing something of this size is not really, you know, there's not a lot of people waiting out there for it. And we do have other hangers and facilities available that are pretty large that we could offer any potential tenant.
And that's it. Thank you.
All right. Any other clarifying questions from council before we go to public comment? Councilmember Jensen, you know what? I'm sorry, I'm going to cut you off just momentarily. Madam Clerk, am I supposed to do emotion? Oh, because this is the last action item. Oh, we can go hog wild. Okay. Sorry, I was thinking, I'm so well-trained, that we have to do a motion by 10:45. But we do not, because this is our last action item. So Councilmember Jensen, back to you.
I'm just a little confused. I'm looking at the lease amendment, page two of the lease amendment, and just the numbers that was included in the agenda packet. It appears that the remaining amount owed for the month it appears that the remaining amount owed for the month does not, is not totaled. So the total is for the, the total for the base rent owed is 1.192,669. The deferred amount is 775,619. But then the remaining amount owed is only 43,951.
Can you tell us again what page, which exhibit?
I'm on page two of the lease.
Exhibit one?
Thank you, Councilmember Jensen. That is an error. You're right. It should sum to the, it should be the total over the nine-month period. So it should sum to
About 400.
The total of that column. And that, I apologize for the error.
That's okay. I just wanted to make sure that as long as it's in the final lease, as long as it's included in, yeah. Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay, any further clarifying questions? Let's go to public comment. Madam Clerk.
Estella Villagrana.
Welcome, Speaker Villagrana.
Well, hello again. Wow, you're talking big numbers here, right? I'm here not to go against Astra. I'm in support of Astra. But I'm here to get the same support you're going to give Astra. I know it's a giant business in comparison to mine, but I think I deserve the same support. So I want to see that support come into Building 43 Winery. And I also, I was, in my last speech, I was talking about how proud I am of certain things. Well, one more thing I forgot to mention is that, I forgot to mention that I'm the first Latina USA citizen, not born in US, that owns a winery and is located in Alameda. So, thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker?
Trish Spencer.
Welcome, Speaker Spencer.
I also want to speak in support of Astra. But I want to make note and make sure everyone is aware that this company has in fact struggled. They came to Alameda while I was mayor. That's when they came to 360. And we worked with them. And they apparently have stopped paying rent as of October, is what it looks like. They had gone on public at some point in 2021 and were doing very well when they first launched with a high of their stock price of $337 a share in 2021. And those of us that have been watching Astra space, and I know many of you have, they went as low as almost approximately 50 cents a share, which is when they, in 2024, when then they went back to being a private company. So we actually don't have access to their valuation at this point. But the last it was public, it was anywhere from, I've seen, 12 to 25 million dollars as opposed to the 2 to 2.6 billion dollars at the high. And so when I hear, you know, they are Alameda's biggest tenant, and then I do encourage everyone to look at their management page, and I'm surprised that the manager, that the founders aren't here today. At least I didn't see them or hear from them. I would be remiss not to mention that everyone on their management page is male and white. Apparently, it appears to be white. Their founders, who I have met and are very, you know, I like them, very, very nice. But, you know, it is true, we have this, the city has this other serious problem with a much smaller tenant. And when you look at Astra, right, they just got, and thank goodness, this up to $44 million deal with the government after having really struggled. And I believe they had like fail, five failed attempts out of seven. And so we were wondering, you know, I was wondering what's going to happen, right? And they were recently quoted as saying, just the founders, just don't give up. And I think that, you know, it is that messaging that Alameda, I think as a community and as a council and our staff, the city staff has supported them. I think, you know, because now that they have been successful at getting this huge, up to $44 million loan, which of course, you're not going to see at 43 small business. But let's, I'm hoping to see similar treatment of all of our tenants. Thanks.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Anonymous Bear.
Welcome. Oh, in the room. Hi.
Yes, hi. Hi Katie, hi Bryson. I just want to say that I'm a Berkeley student who was a, and I, my friend told me to be here, so I just thought it'd be fun to be here. That as a Berkeley student who was, who was helping law students doing their mechanical engineering coursework, I would be glad to have Astra stay, be a stronghold, stronghold I can, I can hire future students. We would, we would like to revitalize the Alameda area. We would like industry to come back to the area and, and give us jobs. And that'd be great to see, see that. I know, I know this company has a lot of difficulties in the past few, few years. And I'm, it's our first time here, I'm a little nervous.
Take a deep breath. It's good.
Yes, and I just, I just excited to participate in, in this city governance. And it's, and you know, I think, I think that given the news in the past few days about governments having, and their illegal impoundments of funds, I think it'd be nice for the city government to give our, our little, little business a little bit of lenience towards their funds. Because in, in the next four years, our, our city and the area, the area around us will be attacked by the federal government and, on financial ends. If you're on, if you are a federal contractor, your funds might be impounded. So if the city is willing to give some lenience towards, towards these businesses and, and give them some, I don't know, even if it's not justified, right? It's, it's nice to, for the city to consider doing this kind of stuff to help those businesses survive in the next few years or so, or more, hopefully not more. And, and you know, my mentor and my, and people around me, they have, they have worked with the company before and they, they, I know companies in a, in a dark time right now, but it'd be nice to see they succeed. And that, that would be, it would be really nice to, it'd be great for the people in Berkeley to also have an opportunity to work here and still having to work for other contractors that are in use right now for very negative reasons. And I think that's, that's, that's great for, for people around here. And that's, that's, that's my opinion. Thanks for considering my comments. And, and see you around, Katie. See you around, Bryson.
Thank you. Our next speaker?
Todd Hickman.
Welcome, Speaker Hickman.
Yes, I'd like to start tonight by saying I fully support Astra. I think it's a great company. I definitely like to see the city giving them support. I really think they should have been here tonight. I guess I can see how in their position, they're probably a little bit embarrassed. So that's why they're not here. I think that's kind of weak, particularly asking for this kind of a deal and this kind of money. Come on, gentlemen, what the hell? But okay, okay, I still support you. Again, you know, I think the city should do this deal with them. Again, I, I think this is more of the racist policy of the city of Alameda when they vigorously harass and apply their racist policies to my business partner, Ms. Villagrana. She's two days late on her rent and they have, you know, they're harassing her. Mr. Shin is sending five-day notices to pay or quit. And they're out there harassing her business, trying to humiliate her in front of customers and implement their longstanding Alameda white-ass racist policies against her. And here we are with Astra, who's been, what, five months now not paying rent? And I doubt they got a pay, pay or quit notice, you know, put upon them. Again, a good old boy club of white-ass males with a few white-ass females thrown in there just for sport. It's pretty pathetic. I mean, what's next? Are we going back to checking IDs when people come through the tunnel just to make sure they live in Alameda? Thank God we got Chief Yoshi to stop that. So even if Ms. Ashcraft did direct that to happen, I'm pretty damn sure that Chief Yoshi is going to stop that from happening. So again, pretty pathetic with the racist policies of the city of Alameda. You guys just don't quit with your racist bullshit. What is wrong with you? Baller, what are you thinking? Are you here to investigate this? I think you're a spy, man. I think you're here for the DA's office for the county of Alameda to get after this shit. I'm pretty sure of that. Michelle Pryor, are you here to teach your grade schoolers a lesson? Is that what's going on, huh? Are you teaching them about racism in the classroom? I sure hope so, because it is rampant here in the city of Alameda. I mean, discriminated against Latina business owners. Oh, a Latina business owner who was one of the founding members of Spirits Alley, who has done the duty in the historic district.
Just pause the time. The gentleman in the back who's applauding, please stop.
Done the duty, and here we have Astra who are giving a sweet deal, who came after Building 43, who is not a customer-serving business generating sales tax, still a great business. Again, I fully support Astra. I fully support these white, male individuals who have access to all kinds of venture capital funding when this small business Latina business owner has no access to venture capital funding. You are racist and should be ashamed of yourselves.
And before, Mr. Hickman, please sit down and be quiet. Gentlemen in the back, the next time you applaud, I will ask you to leave. I'm not talking, I'm not talking to you. Mr. Hickman, control yourself. Control yourself. Do try to control yourself. Yeah, we try to act like adults. So I want to take a moment, I want to make, take a moment and apologize to everyone who was listening and had to listen to that. This is the exception rather than the rule, and it does exceed the bounds of the First Amendment. Some 99% of the people who come to the city council meeting comport themselves with dignity. Not everyone does. I want to apologize to my colleagues, who I want to apologize, apologize to my colleagues who have been singled out personally. There are some things you just need to ignore and not give people agency. And though I start out in the beginning of every meeting and I lay out what the ground rules are, I expect 99% of the people to abide by them. I'm very, I'm very disappointed when others don't. So, and I also want to apologize to staff for having to listen to that. But anyway, the best thing to do is just to let it roll off your back and move on. So, Madam Clerk, do we have any further?
That was our last speaker.
With that, we will, okay, we're taking a break, people. Five minutes break, five minutes break. Okay, we'll be back at 11:00, 11:05.
Time for a break. Thank you.
Back, I'm gonna call Abby Thorne Lyman back.
Yes, please.
Although, I would like to spare your voice, because it just sounds like...
I can read it for you.
No, no, I think she's, she knows what she said, yeah. All right, just give me, I said five minutes and I set my timers, so, I live by timers. All right. Time passes slowly when you're watching a clock. Okay, Ms. Thorne Lyman, the floor is yours.
So, I just wanted to clarify for Councilmember Hatch, on the typo in the amendment on the table titled Deferred Rent Payment Schedule on Page 2, the second column from the right at the bottom should read the total number, the total remaining amount owed should state $417,050.19 instead of $43,951.31. Thank you, Councilmember.
Yes, thank you, thank you both. Okay, great. So then, Madam Clerk, we had finished public comment, had we not? Okay. So, I'm gonna actually lead on this one. As was noted, I did spend a good long time out at Astra toward the end of last year. And what, and I'm very supportive of what staff is recommending that we do. This is a company that is working very diligently on restructuring, resizing, doing all the things that will allow them to pay back. By going private and needing to buy up their stocks, there was an expenditure, but they have a very, a very systematic, smart business plan for moving forward. The other thing that I want to highlight is the jobs that are out there, and they're jobs at all different levels. I mean, they certainly have, you know, the PhDs and the sinus. They also have machinists. This is one of the few companies you'll see, because so much of design these days and parts is done, it's computer-generated, and Astra does that. But they hire machinists and they hire them out of one of the Peralta Community College programs, I think it's Laney, because they have that program there. And then, they train them in what they need to learn to operate, to do the machining of these parts, and it's, they're so beautiful, it's like art, actually. And then, and as long as it takes to train them, they keep training, this is their being paid as they're, as they're learning, and then, when they've mastered a particular skill, they then train them, they move them up to the next machine, which is operating a computer that is designing and manufacturing these parts. And so, the fact that they are giving people these entry-level positions and the job security, I think that that's something that is fundamental to what we want to do at Alameda Point, and in fact, it was part of the charge when the Navy left in the late 1990s, 1997, I think, that those 18,000, right, jobs that were, that were, that were there at the Navy base, some of them military, but some of them civilian, we've wanted to backfill that. And so, when I see a company that is, that has those jobs from entry level all the way up to something that would require a PhD, this is the sort of thing we want to, we want to support. And as Ms. Thorne Lyman noted, in today's real estate market, it's not that there's a lot of demand for a building like this, and we have others if someone's interested in this large space. And so, for all the reasons that, and you look at the amount of rent that it's generating to the city that's going into the base reuse fund, and we need that money to keep doing the work that's so important out at the former Naval Air Station. So, I, I am a big believer of second chances, and I found the folks at Astra to be very humble, very thorough, and just very diligent in what they want to do, to keep doing their operation, to keep operating, to keep employing the people that they're employing, and I want that for Alameda as well. So, those are my thoughts. Why don't we go to the right? Councilmember Bowler?
I support the staff recommendation.
Okay, and Councilmember DeSog.
Yeah, Astra, they're in a difficult situation, and I think if we approve the amendment tonight, you know, it doesn't guarantee that they're gonna succeed, but it does give them a fighting chance to succeed. And I think, you know, the sector that this company is in is frankly, is quite exciting, and the fact that there are 130 jobs, and, and that facilities from Sunnyvale potentially would relocate to Alameda. I, I think this is something that we should, something that we should do. It doesn't guarantee anything, but, but it does give Astra a fighting chance to succeed. So, I support it.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Pryor.
I just want to echo what Councilmember DeSog just said. I think it is a good risk, and I support, I agree with staff's recommendation.
Thank you. And Councilmember Jensen.
I had the opportunity to visit Astra late last year, and I was impressed with the organization's focus on the future. They have some challenges now, and I also want to appreciate staff's negotiations and, and consideration of different alternatives. I think that Astra's work, as the mayor mentioned, for contributions to the community, and especially the contributions to that site that they're at, really have been valuable to the city, so I'll definitely support this.
Would you like to make a motion to that effect?
I will make a motion to approve this amendment.
The staff recommendation.
The staff recommendation with the changes on the lease, yes.
So, is the introduction of the ordinance, he said it, okay, all right. All right, so we've had a motion by Councilmember Jensen, seconded by Vice Mayor Pryor, to approve the staff recommendation, which is the introduction of the ordinance authorizing City Manager to Execute the Lease Amendment for Building 360 as set forth in the agenda. Any further discussion, counsel? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? That sounds like a unanimous vote. Thank you so much. All right, so we move on, and thank you very much, Ms. Thorne Lyman, and, and also Mr. Gentile, if you're still there. Okay, we move on to item number eight, City Manager Communications. City Manager Ott.
Sorry, I just had it up.
Do you have a freezing iPad, too?
There we go. Sorry about that. The, the city has grant opportunities available for the performing arts, literary arts, film and video screenings and installations, art education, art lectures and presentations, special events, and artist-in-residence programs. We also have grants available for small business facade improvements like exterior painting, new awnings and signs, and refurbishment of architectural features that enhance the city's retail districts. And artists and local business owners can read more and apply on the city's website. Also, Rhythmix Cultural Works is hosting a celebration of artist Bonnie Randall Bowler, the late mother of Councilmember Greg Bowler, and her work, including in caustic painting, pottery, printmaking, and mixed media. And the exhibit runs through March 21st with an opening reception this Thursday, February 6th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. An Alameda native, Bonnie, was a prolific artist and arts educator. She taught ceramics at Mastic Senior Center, held leadership positions in local arts organizations, advocated to display local artists' work at City Hall, and will be deeply missed. Tickets are still available online for ARPD's Family Snowball Dance Party this Friday night, February 7th. This event is for kids 5 through 12 years old and their families with dancing, arts and crafts hors d'oeuvres and Mardi Gras theme. And then, the last, lastly, the Bay Area Polar Plunge supports the Special Olympics and is moving to Alameda this year.
Really?
So, on March 1st, you can participate by joining the 5K Run, taking a dip into the chilly waters at Crown Beach, or donating and supporting Team Alameda. Thank you.
Sounds like fun. Okay, item nine, Oral Communications, Not Agenda. Madam Clerk?
Ahmed Makhni.
Welcome.
Thank you. Hey, Mayor. First question, Yeben. What is...
May I just let you know that this is public comment, it's not question and answer.
So, it would be a question for, like, City Attorney Yeben, if real estate, is it public, public in a way, is real estate ownership public record? That's a fair question. In Alameda, we had below-market rate housing in Lancy, Alameda. And as Ott, the city manager, would know, the Lancy has been a very, very unfair for the residents of Alameda like me. And Amy Woodridge would know more than I do. What I can, I want to ask you, Mayor Ashcraft, is there a systematic racism of taking away certain type of people that were screened by the city of Alameda in accordance with the Yeben, with the Amy Woodridge, with the Jennifer Ott, to select certain type of people with a knowledge, prior knowledge, that were qualified? And I take you, Tony DeSog, why didn't you respond to me?
So, so, Mr. Ahmed?
And the same thing, Tracy. There is a systematic racism in Alameda. They would take away someone who either complained, who either is not black, who either is not something, who either is not something else. And this is something you guys need to respond. I'm upset, and I have a proof.
Thank you. Our next speaker.
Shelby Sheehan.
Welcome, Speaker Sheehan.
How much time do I have?
Two minutes.
Two minutes? Okay, I was at home, I just watched the last item. Shame on all of you. Of course, you're going to try to ignore Mr. Hickman.
So, this is, okay, non-agenda item?
Yeah, so please don't interrupt me. People lose their train of thought. I have a brain injury. Don't interrupt me, this is my time. Of course, you're going to interrupt me. Of course, you're gonna try to ignore Mr. Hickman, because you ignore the public. What you should not ignore is the criminal activity by this one, this one, and this one. I sent all of you, except for you, Michelle, I don't have your email, it bounced back, what I sent to the Board of Supervisors, when that one was up for interim district attorney. The crimes that this man has committed, the amount of lies that he has told to the court, that he should be disbarred, these two should be in jail, I have listed the crimes over and over again to City Council. Tony, you are asleep at the wheel. You know what's going on, and you're ignoring it. You have no idea, you're gonna vote with everything she does. Tracy, wake up, it's right in front of you. Greg, you're a DA, you can't ignore it. So, stop ignoring people. These ones belong in jail. Shen, you know what I'm talking about. You can't do a code enforcement warrant when you're a municipal city attorney. You can't hire outside counsel for a million dollars for an eviction against someone when your house is substandard and you're not enforcing the code. I've got all the documentation, it's in PRA emails, it's under appeal at the San Francisco appellate court. You're going to lose, God help me, I can't wait till the day you're all in jail. Do something about it.
Thank you. Our next speaker.
That was our last speaker.
All right, so, with that, we go, we don't have any council referrals, so then we go to Council Communications. Let's start on my left, Councilmember Jensen, Council Communications.
Thank you. Late in January, I attended the, with several of my city council colleagues, the California League of Cities Mayors and Councilmembers Conference in Sacramento. Quite interesting, a chance to meet other local and California legislators and learn about some, some ways to communicate better. So, I had a good time there. I returned on Saturday, January 25th, in time to attend the annual Assembly AD, the AD-18 Awards. In addition to celebrating the service of Representative Barbara Lee, Assemblymember Mia Bonta recognized two Alameda institutions and one outstanding local teacher. The AD-18 Alameda Awardees were the people behind last year's first annual Filipino Fest, which was celebrated out on the radium runway on a very hot day, and also the tremendous resource that is the Alameda Food Bank. The celebration also supported and recognized a tremendous Alameda teacher, the Alameda Teacher of the Year, my friend, Bay Farm Island Elementary Teacher, Michelle Cutner, who also was instrumental in establishing Alameda's elementary and now middle gardens program. Finally, I want to appreciate the hard work and dedication of Alameda firefighters who were deployed to Southern California recently, and also to remember on this day, firefighter who, who we lost last year at this time, Patrick Corden.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Pryor.
Yes, I was also in Sacramento. It was really great to meet other mayors and other council members from across California. And I think it was Saturday night, we went to the Asian Health Services Gala in Oakland, and that was a beautiful event. And part of the program is, they talked about the 50-year history, and that, I mean, the short version is that there are, you know, thousands of people that have been helped that have access to healthcare regardless of having a language barrier, and that's, that's just very incredible. It was an incredible story. I could talk about it a lot longer. And I also want to thank the firefighters from Alameda that went to the fires down south. I grew up in Los Angeles, so that just meant, means a lot to me personally.
You, Councilmember Bowler.
I, too, attended the League of Cities Training and Conference for New Councilmembers and Mayors in Sacramento, and just want to echo the good words of my colleagues, councilmembers Jensen and Pryor, with talking especially about the efforts of the firefighters, so thank you.
Thank you. And Councilmember DeSog.
Yes, along with Mayor Ashcraft, I attended the City of Alameda AC Transit Liaison Meeting last week. The big top, one of the big topics of which was possibly having our City of Alameda AC Transit meeting kind of grouped together with other cities. So, Mayor Ashcraft and myself expressed...
Consternation.
Consternation about, about that idea. Logistically, it would mean a longer meeting, and, you know, as we would get rolled in with larger cities, perhaps some of the issues that are specific to Alameda might get lost. So, I think, I, I'm hoping that AC Transit trustee Sarah Sayed will be working with her AC Transit staff people to figure out how to keep the structure that we have in place. Secondly, this Thursday, I will be attending on behalf of the mayor, the Coast, at Coast Guard Island, the enlisted personnel of the quarter, as well as a civilian employee of the quarter. So, that will be this Thursday morning, along with a breakfast.
Thank you, and thank you for doing that for me. I, and I was just at Coast Guard Island one day last week for a luncheon with the command staff there, and also from Sector San Francisco, and one of the things they noted was that they so appreciate when the city of Alameda comes to those events, and so they specifically wanted to let me know, and, and it's, it's, it's nice for us, too. And Councilmember DeSog, you will appreciate, it was the same day we had our AC Transit ILC meeting. And so, I just brought my packet, because I was able to show them that one of the improvements that we'll be doing, starting this year, maybe finishing next year, is on Stargill Avenue that runs past the Coast Guard housing. And right now, that's a very fast street, it's going to be taken down to one lane in each direction, and with a crosswalk, a nice marked crosswalk and a center island right where the driveway, the entrance to the Coast Guard housing is, and they were very pleased to see that. On January 22nd, I started in San Francisco, I'm now on the Metropolitan Transportation Commission, and for that meeting, and then I took a feeder bus to Amtrak in Emeryville from San Francisco and took the train to Sacramento for the same meeting that Vice Mayor Pryor and Councilmember Jensen attended. And there were two other councilmembers from around the East Bay in the same train car where I was. So, you know, we do take trains. And so then, I was there for the 22nd and the 23rd. I also attended my Housing, Community, and Economic Development Policy Committee while I was at the League Workshop. And then, last week, on the 29th, which was maybe Monday morning, something morning, city manager and I attended the San Francisco Business Times Economic Forecast Breakfast in San Francisco, and we got to hear, well, the very impressive city attorney of Oakland, because there's not a mayor to speak for Oakland right now, but the city attorney was great, but also we got to hear new San Francisco mayor, Daniel Lurie, and he's impressive. I went up afterwards and introduced myself and said, I'm a San Francisco native, I was rooting for you all the way, but I think he's just what San Francisco needs at this point in time. And so then, and yes, I was also at the Asian Health Services 50th Anniversary Gala, and it's a very impressive story of how these four, four young people, or several young people, all recent UC Berkeley grads in 1974, said, there's only one doctor in all of Oakland Chinatown, there's something wrong with this, and their parents and grandparents were immigrants, and they weren't English speakers, or if they spoke English, it was very limited. They said, we need to do something about this, and we were talking about this, it was the anti-Vietnam era, and the Black Panther movement, and they, they just had this can-do spirit, and 50 years later, this clinic serves thousands and thousands, it has expanded to a dental clinic and mental health services in San Leandro, it's in Oakland, we're hoping to do more at the College of Alameda, there might be another meeting about that. Anyway, very nice event. So, okay, that's Council Communications, we have one more item, and this is just an announcement, it's not action, and this... And this is, I do want to introduce that item for me, Madam Clerk.
Mayor's nomination for the Commission on Persons with Disabilities Golf Commission and Public Utilities Board, and we do have a speaker. And we can call him first if you want.
Oh, yeah, why don't we call the speaker first?
Gabriel Duncan.
Welcome, Speaker Duncan. Hello.
Hey, Gabriel Duncan. Wanted to say I would love the opportunity to get on one of these commissions sometime, so I'm just going to continue to keep putting my application in, and hopefully one day you'll pick me. Thank you.
Thank you. So, I am so pleased, and again, I think I was telling the city manager, maybe the assistant city manager, after this interview, that it really is such a pleasure to get to do these interviews because, well, it's an interview, so we always ask everyone the same question. And by the way, although it's my choice who to appoint, and the full city council has to approve, I always invite whoever the board secretary is of the Board or Commission to interview with me, because I, you know, would like their input. And so, last Friday, AMP General Manager Tim Haines and I did three interviews in rapid succession. I think my record is, Alan Tyne and I once interviewed 11 Planning Board candidates in one day, and we barely knew our names by the end of that. But anyway, what is really so inspiring is that we always ask, I always ask, we take turns asking questions, but why did you apply for this board and commission? And everyone gives a variation of the same answer. I've lived here two years, nine years, 14 years, 22 years. I love this community, I've raised my kids here, looking forward to raising my kids here, and I just want to give back, I just want to give my time and talent. This particular position on the Public Utilities Board is for an engineer, and that's specified in the city charter. We had three very impressive engineers, and it's so, just great choices. We chose Nicholas De Vries, and he is the Chief Technology Officer of, it's called Silicon Ranch Corporation, and they are responsible for the technical and ecological vision of the company's 180 solar power plants and the stewardship of 40,000 acres of working land. And when I say working land, grazing land, in fact, so we were, you know, doing this on Zoom, and his background was a field with solar panels, a grassy field with solar panels, but in between and all around those solar panels were sheep, flocks of sheep. And we said, what? And the company actually owns those sheep, and they want to make sure that not only, and this was somewhere in Georgia, in the state of Georgia, that not only are they providing solar, they're also doing more, they're providing grazing land, and they are able to generate this electricity and generate it cheaply. And he was telling us that, so the people in Georgia are choosing electric power over others, not because they just want to, you know, do the right thing for the planet, I mean, I'm sure some of them do, but it's cheaper. And those are the kinds of things. Anyway, he has great, great background in a lot of solar power operations. And so, at our next council meeting, Mr. De Vries will be coming to you. He also is an active volunteer in the Alameda schools, he's a member of CASA, and I'm excited for you all to meet him at our next meeting. So that takes care of item 11A. And thank you, Councilmember Jensen, for remembering Patrick Corden, our firefighter who we lost a year ago. I would like to adjourn this evening's meeting, both in Patrick's memory and also in memory of my council colleague, our council colleague, Greg Bowler's mother, illustrious artist and lovely woman, I did know her, Bonnie Randall Bowler. And so, let's have a moment of silence before we adjourn in their memories. All right, thank you, council, thank you, staff, for all your good work. Everybody drive really carefully out there on those wet roads, and we will see you all soon. Take care. You're welcome.